Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Oviedo City Council meeting. It's Monday, March 6, 6:30 P.M. If everybody can rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Chief White, if you can impart your wisdom. Now, Chief, before you start, I think between our last council meeting and this one, you might have married off a daughter.
I did.
Congratulations to you. Give him a big round of applause.[47.62][47.62](APPLAUSE). Officially empty nest?
Yes.
There you go. Boy, you said that very enthusiastically.
That was the longest walk of my life.[58.64][58.64](LAUGHTER).
Yeah, I did the same thing a couple of years ago. How many dads out there have given away a daughter? Raise your hand. Yeah, that's a tough walk, isn't it? No matter whether you like the kid or not.[68.61][68.61](LAUGHTER).
I think the dance was harder than the walk.
Dance is tough.
Well, thank you for asking. I appreciate that. If you'd like to join me in a word of prayer, please do so at this time. Father God, thank you for the many blessings that you bestow on our great nation. Lord, we just particularly, in these times of unsettled rest all across the world, we pray for protection. We pray for a hedge of protection around our nation, and you would protect our military, our elected leaders, our president, our cabinets, that you would guide them, give them great wisdom, give us wisdom here in these chambers as well. Lord, we continue to pray for Oviedo Battalion Chief Neil Huggins as he recovers from very serious surgery. We know you have him in your hands, Lord. Be with our police officers tonight, all of our public safety, send them home safely to their families. We pray this in your name. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Chief. This time, I'd like to call our meeting to order. It's approximately 6:35 P.M. We have all members of council present. We have two ceremonial items this evening, so we'll start with our first item, which is the Oviedo Preservation Project presentation. Mr. Cobb, can you do a brief introduction?
Yes, Mayor, thank you. Top President, Mr. Bob Putnam, is here tonight to make a presentation to the city council. I think he'll be presenting some gifts to the council in appreciation for the city's support of the top programs.
Great.
I couldn't have said it better. My name is Bob Putnam, and I am the current president of the Oviedo Preservation Project. I have, I feel the need to turn around and tell everyone in the audience that as well. I live in Winter Springs. I am not a resident of Oviedo, but being a history guy, I've been recruited into the membership of the Oviedo Preservation Project. And we are here tonight to remind everyone that the Oviedo Preservation Project sponsors our annual Rising 5K race in October, as well as the cemetery tour immediately following the cemetery, the Rising 5K race in October. We also are a participant in the Taste of Oviedo, and that's coming up this weekend, as you all know. We'd like to thank the mayor for serving as a judge on the citrus and celery cookoff. And I believe there's also a former councilman Shank's daughter has entered in that citrus and celery cookoff. So we'd love to have that participation, and thank you all for that. We continue in the Oviedo Preservation Project to brainstorm ways in which to enhance Oviedo and the history of Oviedo, and that's what I'm here to do tonight, to thank the city, the police department for helping us run those events without a hitch, and the citizens of Oviedo for helping us in all of those historical efforts. And to commemorate that thank you, I have a gold medal for the mayor. And this is a ceremonial gold medal. This is the first ever presented to anyone other than a winner of the 5K Rising Race, so you understand the significance of this award.
Should we put it up somewhere at City Hall?
That's what I was going to do.
I believe we will have to spend some money for a trophy case, very much like your high school does. This might be the first. If we could have a photo opportunity and invite the mayor to come forward, please, we'll formalize this in the best way we can.
Why doesn't everybody come join you? Come on, guys.[306.62][306.62](CROWD APPLAUSE).
You see how precious it is? Great.[332.03][332.03](CROWD APPLAUSE). The whole person has created all of the awards.
And Bob, thank you for everything that you do. We do appreciate it.[388.65][388.65](CROWD APPLAUSE).
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. I'll be happy to, Mayor. Council, the city staff has been working with the city's auditing firm, McDermott Davis, to prepare the comprehensive annual financial report for the fiscal year that ended in September of 2016. Tonight, our finance director, Mr. Boop, as well as Ms. Kelly Leary from McDermott Davis, have a presentation for you to update you on the results of the CAFRA. I'll turn it over to Mr. Boop.
Thank you, Mr. Cobb, Honorable Mayor, and council members. I want this to be a brief presentation to you of the results of operations for the last fiscal year 2015 and '16. If you go to the next screen. A couple folks that I really need to recognize in the room is Collette Weber. She is the financial operations manager. Collette's responsible for the basic overall operations of the finance department, and she's responsible for the monthly closings, the cash reconciliations, customer service, and things of that nature. In addition, Kelly Jones is in the room, and she is the one who is responsible for basically pulling all of that information together to help the external auditors complete the audit package that you have before you. And without those two people, and of course, your support and all the directors, this would not be possible, so I just need to recognize everybody tonight. So, next up page, please. This page is meant to give us all a brief overview of the significant financial components of the CAFRA report that you see in front of you, the comprehensive annual financial report. It's comprised of the letter transmittal. The letter transmittal is really my letter and Brian's letter, or management's letter, to you describing certain important aspects of the city, such as economically what happened over the past year, significant accounting policies, and things of that nature. Also embedded at the end of the letter of transmittal are significant accomplishments, what staff actually performed and completed over the last fiscal year. Then, of course, the independent auditors' report, which Kelly Leary will get into in just a few minutes, the management discussion and analysis, which is a 100,000-foot overview of the entire city, what took place. The government-wide financial statements. Back in 2004, the Gatsby, which basically dictates pronouncements for our industry, said that we need to do a better job of presenting financial statements to our members and to the public. So what they did is they designed a brand-new set of financial statements, which basically pull all the financial information together for both the government side and the business side into one set of financial statements. That's called the government-wide financial statements. And, of course, the old pieces that we used to do, the fund financial statements, which are really economically-based or cash-based financial statements, the notes to the financial statements, the RSI required supplementary information, of course, the statistical section. Next slide, please. And like I said, the government-wide financial statements are really comprised of two presentations, the statement of net position, which basically is a balance sheet, okay, for the entire organization, and the statement of activities, which is really an income statement for the entire organization. Over the last year, governmental activities increased, which means net income increased by about 1.4 million. That's basically due to expenditures coming in under budget. Business-type activities increased, bottom line, by 2.6 million, and that's mainly due to developer contributions and the enterprise funds. Next slide, please. This kind of shows you that the tilt, if you will, between the government-wide financial statements and the business-type activities. Government-wide, basically, and I know the mayor always asks me this question every year, Jerry, what's going on with our special revenue and capital funds? And you can really see that presentation when you look at the governmental activities. You can see that it has kind of a large surplus, which is represented by the green, which are, those are dollars that we hold in reserve for those financial commitments specific to special revenue funds, as well as the capital projects funds. The business activities, that kind of gives you the right tilt. It shows you basically what the revenues and the expenditures are, and the remaining fund balance, and then the total. Next page, please. The general fund, this is a picture, if you will, of revenues by source. Of course, we all know that, you know, the big thing here is, the big dog is really taxes. Ad valorem taxes last year were about 10.3 million. Utility service taxes were about 3.2. Medications taxes, 1.1, and business taxes came in at about $136,000. And, of course, you can see the other distribution amongst the other revenue sources there. Next page, please. And the expenditures by source, public safety came in about 13.9 million. Police was 8.2 of that. Fire was about 5.6, 5.7 of that. And the rest is evenly distributed pretty much between parks and rec, physical environment, which is public works, and then, of course, general government. Next page. What happened to the general fund? What's good, what's bad? General fund, basically, the total fund balance increased by $584,000. Last year, when we made this presentation to you, I significantly missed a major component of the presentation, kind of threw the budget team off and slipped them a curveball. And this year, I want to explain that a little bit different, a little bit better. Of the increase in fund balance, what you'll see there is you've got general fund carryforwards of $217,000. And what these are, these are purchase commitments related to the previous fiscal year that are part of that fund balance, part of that surplus, that we'll be spending in the future fiscal year. So that brings the total down to about $367,000. And in that total, the, we have a restricted fund balance, which is again restricted for other reasons of 76. So the net roll forward of fund balance really ends up being, or the net increase in fund balance really ends up being right about $291,000. And that $291,000 basically is the bottom line increase. However, that will probably more than likely be consumed by the increase in the budgets to meet the 15% surplus over the next fiscal year. So, the undesigned, unassigned fund balance is 18.9%, which is above our policy of 15%. Next page, please. The combined governmental funds, we had a decrease in total governmental funds, which is your general fund, your rev, special revenue funds, and your capital expenditure funds of $433,000, and that's primarily due to the expenditures related to the fire station placing that in service over the last fiscal year. Next page, please.[837.88][837.88](CROWD APPLAUSE). Is that the next page? Utility fund, I think. Utility fund revenues by source, waters, 31%. Capital contributions, 20.24%. Those are developer contributions and impact fees. Sewer revenues of 39% and reclaimed revenues of 6.6%. Next slide, please. Expenses by source. For utility funds, administration was 8%. Interest expense was 12.87% related to debt service. Cost of sales and services, 39%. Depreciation is 25%. Transfers out to other funds is 14%. Next slide. Very busy schedule. I wanted to take a few moments here and explain some of these numbers and just walk us through these. We had operating revenues of 13, for fiscal year 15, '16, 13.5 million, expenses of 10.4, operating income of $3,050,000, and non-operating revenues expenditures of 1.7 million, which is primarily related to interest expense that we paid over the last fiscal year. Capital contributions was down this year. It was down from 1.1 million down to 602, and developer contributions increased significantly from 1.3 to 2.8 million. Transfers out increased from 1.3 million to 2.1 million. We had a net increase of 2.6 million in the utility funds, which is an increase in our net assets, net bottom line increase in revenues. But one thing I wanted to point out here is that's primarily related to the developer contributions which occurred down below the line, okay? Your operating income was 1.7 million, which is basically pretty much eaten up by the net transfers that we had out to the other funds. And were it not for the impact fee revenues and the developer contributions, we probably would not have had a positive income in the utilities this year, which is something that happens every year, trends differently every single year. Next slide, please. So what happened in the utility fund transfers? Last year, we met with the budget team, and we really had a lot of accounting problems with the way that we had split various different functions and activities and employees throughout the entire city. And we said that perhaps the simplest thing to do was to include the functions that occur that the general fund basically contributes to the utilities as a transfer out instead of spending personnel amongst the various different funds. It was a headache for us in finance, a headache for us in HR, and also a headache for us in the budgeting process. So what we did is we took a look at that, and we adjusted the transfers out and gave folks home departments. We put them all in one spot, and we adjusted the transfer out, basically to show the services that were provided by the general fund. And so you can see there's an increase in the general fund of contributions from the utility. Service line is pretty flat. Health insurance fund increased a little bit, but our health insurance expenses are going up. The technology improvement fund basically is, has increased because last year is the first year that we increased the EPIC, increased the transfer into the technology improvement fund to facilitate the EPIC study and to purchase all the fixed asset improvements that we needed to have over in IT. Next slide, please. Financial summary. We had a solid performance for fiscal year 2015 and '16. The financial condition of the city is stable. The underlying rating by, from Standard and Poor's for our GO bonds is AA-. Our utility bonds is AA, outlook's stable. The senior lien debt service is extremely healthy at 2.34. The bond covenants call for 1.1. City policy is 1.25, so we are maintaining a healthy coverage level in our city utilities. Next slide. With that, I will take any questions before Kelly Leary comes up and completes her part of the presentation.
Thank you, Jerry. Any questions from council? No? Jerry, excellent job, as always.
Thank you.
Do you add your team? Kelly, how are you?
I'm just fine, Mayor. How are you?
I'm great. It's always nice to see you. Just once a year, we get to see you.
Thank you. Well, I'm going to just briefly talk about what's on the one page that, it was the, after the question, on that? I think it was after.
Last page of the presentation.
Maybe it was before the questions. But basically, what it says is that our opinion on these audited financial statements is what's called unmodified, which is a good thing, because if it were modified, it would mean that something out of ordinary. But the city's financial statements are prepared in accordance with generally accepted accounting principles, and they're fairly stated. We didn't have any issues with that. And the certificate of achievement that the city requests every year from the Government Finance Officers Association, they have received it for 25 years for this comprehensive annual financial report, and they have received it 11 years for their budget. And as Jerry said earlier, both the general fund and the water sewer utility funds, both had excess of revenues over expenses in the current year, so it was a positive year. One of the requirements of the audit is that we issue a management letter. The auditor general requires that, and he requires that we address specific items in the management letter. And one of the things that we have to address is that the city does monitor its financial condition, and we actually calculate probably 18 to 20 ratios that the auditor general provides on his website, and they're compared to other cities. And there was nothing, it's kind of a, nothing showed that Oviedo's financial condition is not deteriorating, so that's a positive. It's, I know it doesn't really sound like it, but it is positive. There's no trends that show the financial condition is deteriorating, so. The other report that is in our audit that's in the very back behind all the numbers is the report on internal control and compliance in accordance with government auditing standards. And basically, what we say in there is that the city has no weaknesses in the internal controls, and that there are no instances of non-compliance with laws, rules, grants, regulations. And, of course, that is a good thing. So that's really all I have to say, unless you all have some questions.
Let me see. Any questions? No?
Good shape. Thank you.
Thank you, Kelly. Always nice to see you.
Thank you.
And always nice to get that type of report from you.
Yeah, well, Jerry and Mr.
See all the citizens in the audience? They appreciate that, too.
The finance department does a great job.
Thank you so much.
This gets better and better.
Good to hear. Mr. Cobb, anything else on the CAFRA report?
No, Mayor.
All righty. Well, then, that is the end of our ceremonial items for this evening. We'll move on to the approval of the minutes. I'd like to entertain a motion to approve the minutes of February 20, 2017, which was a regular session.
Motion.
Motion second, end of discussion. Hearing none, call the vote. All in favor of the motion to approve signify by saying aye. Aye. Aye opposed. Motion carries. Moving on to our public comment portion. This is for any public comment on items not on our agenda this evening, and I do have one written request from Cindy Cook and Brian Boyle. Going to do a tandem on us?
Hello?
Cindy, how are you?
I'm great, thank you.
Just name and address to the record.
My name is Cindy Cook. My address is, what my, you want my address?
Which is the?
98 West Broadway, Oviedo.
That's fine.
And this is Brian Boyle, 98 West Broadway, Oviedo. We're representing the Forgotten Ones right downtown Oviedo. Been here eight years. Some of you know it as the Vine, the thrift store part, but what we do there is, we're a nonprofit, 501(c). I feel like I have to bring it on, too. It's strange. But anyway, what we do there, if you all don't know, I'll just give you a brief insight on what we do. We, I did court for 11 years in Seminole County, and that's when I got known to working with teens. And I mainly work with aged out foster kids, 18 to 25. That's where my passion is, but it turned into a lot more. If I'd known that when I started, I probably wouldn't have started. But what we do is, we work with the kids, we work with K program, DJJ, Seminole County, Orange County, we're signed up with them. We do, work with community service on a daily base, and we take in kids. And what we do there is we help with IDs, we're a food stamp partner, we help kids get off the street. We probably have about 150 cases that are now off the street that were on the street of young adults. And we don't just get them off the street, we work with them. We sponsor them, we mentor them, and that's where our passion is. And we've gotten people right here in Oviedo off the street that were living behind Publix. And we have an outreach program to the community also every month, and people know us, and they come in and they know if they need clothes or anything through the thrift store, they're more than welcome to have it. We have plenty of stuff. But what we're here today for is that there is the old post office, 145 Geneva Road, down there, the old post office. And we have to move because DOT is taking down the building. I do not own that building. I rented it for eight years. And so we are in timeframe of moving, as a lot of other businesses on that road, for widening of the road. So what we came here today is to see where you are on that building and to see if you would, I mean, we're part of the city, we help the community, we have a lot of programs that we're opening up for kids as far as, you know, job searches, we're working with workforce, and a lot of people at UCF, and mentors to expand, working with the kids, which also involves the family. If we can help the family turn a lot of these kids around, a lot of them don't have families. And I have two at my house right now, and I don't like to mention that because it's not about me, it's about the kids. But they are, they are in need of, they're in need of support and mentors, and we are in need of a building. And for what we pay there, city has grown. I grew up here in Oviedo High School. I'm not going to tell you when I graduated. But I grew up in Oviedo.
I can ask Chief White. He'll tell me.[1593.36][1593.36](LAUGHTER).
No, I took writing lessons from his mother. But anyway, what we're looking is for help from the city, and we know this building, and this building would be great for a lot of programs that we're putting together for the kids, and so that's why we're here, to appeal to you about that building.
Well, thank you. That building does have some restrictions on it for the use that we could use it for, but there's a discussion item later on about it.
Okay.
All right. Thank you, Cindy.
No, I just wanted to say that, you know, that building would be perfect for us, like she was saying, that the problem is that we can't, we want to stay in Oviedo because this is, this is our home, this is where everybody knows that we are. We've gone out looking at other properties, and everything is so expensive that we couldn't, there's no way that we could afford anything else besides maybe getting some help from the city to stay in Oviedo, which we would like to do.
Great.
So, that being said, and the financial health of the city sounded pretty good, so.
That doesn't mean, that doesn't mean we have a lot of extra money.
No. We just need a little help to work together. Thank you.
Just like, just like the kids that we help, we're not looking for a handout. We're looking for a handout.
We understand.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, guys. Appreciate you coming down. That was the end of the written requests that I have. Is there anybody else in the audience who would like to address council on anything not on the agenda this evening? Seeing and hearing none, I'm going to close the public comment portion of the meeting and move on to our consent agenda. The consent agenda tonight are items number five through 10. What is the pleasure of council?
Mr. Mayor?
Deputy Mayor?
I'd like to make a motion to approve it as presented.
Second.
Motion second. Anything, Deputy Mayor?
No, sir. Looks good.
Councilman Pollak?
No, sir.
Anything else from anybody?
Good.
Good. All righty. Hearing no questions, I will call the vote. Motion on table is to approve the items on the consent agenda. All in favor of that motion, please signify by saying aye. Aye. Aye opposed. Motion carries. All righty, let me just catch up here. We have no public hearings tonight. We have no first reading ordinances tonight, so our first item is going to be Resolution Mr. Grude? Uh, no. Mr. Cobb.
Thank you, Mayor. This is a request for the city council to approve an agreement for purchase and sale of property, providing for the acquisition of the Twin Weavers Golf Course. If you remember, back in August of 2016, the city council gave direction for the staff to pursue the acquisition of the golf course, and at its September 19 meeting, the council adopted a resolution approving a mutual letter of intent expressing the city council's intent to purchase the property. At its January 17, 2017, meeting, the city council approved financing in order to purchase the property. Tonight, you're being asked to approve the purchase and sale agreement. The agreement provides for the city to purchase the property for $5 million. There is also, the city will assist the owner with certain fees not to exceed $465,000. The owner is going to be donating some property adjacent to the golf course, too. The owner is going to be donating some property adjacent to the golf course to the city. The city agrees to purchase the property in an "as-is" or "where-is" condition. The closing of the transaction is scheduled for Monday, April 10th, 2017. The owner and the city will, each be responsible of certain fees, such as attorney's fees and different things like that, and it's recommended that the City Council adopt Resolution Number 3388-17.
Thank you, Mr. Cobb. I will open up the public comment portion. I have two written requests. First one is from Mr. Ed Young. Linda, if we can just get the clock going. Try to keep them to about three minutes if you can, sir. Just name and address for the record.
Not a problem. My name is Ed Young, I live at 940 Douglas in Altamont Springs. I'm here representing Seminole Soil and Water Conservation District. I had several of your citizens reach out to me with some concerns. We are an elected body, serves as an advisory board for all elected bodies within the confines of Seminole County. Now, as I understand, the purchase of this is also, of this property is to keep it from being overdeveloped, as compared to what it might be. Couldn't find out some information, I believe a Phase 1 study was conducted, right? A Phase 1 environmental site assessment?
It was.
Okay. Was it Phase 2?
Not yet.
Is one going to be done before you agree to a price? Because Phase 1 is only the first step, and a due diligence of an elected body, there are no soil samples. A Phase 1 means they can scrape things off the building, nothing about soil. Over 98% of the golf courses here in the state of Florida have various contaminations of different levels. My home state saw, like Florida, my home state of Ohio saw a dropout of golf courses from the 70s and 80s, and cities bought them. My concern is dealing with Exhibit 1, what is it, section? Sorry, let me get the exact word. 6, "as-is, where-is." That's basically buying it "as-is" condition, nothing here. Over 50 cities in the state of Ohio did the same thing, some of them 10, 20, 30 years ago, then outpaying out millions because they didn't do a Site 2, didn't find the chemicals there, and it got worse, or people died from it, because it continued the leakage. As elected members, I would highly encourage you all to do that Site 2 before, or Phase 2 before you purchase it, because, one, it's a negotiating tactic, because if you find chemicals, you may, you may not, by the way, do the testing is less than $100. It's a negotiating tactic, saying, listen, you're going to want to sell us this land, here's what it's going to cost us before we can do anything. And it might cost you nothing, except for the testing, it might be, here's a $7 million fee to clean it up, get it out of the system. On behalf of the voters, and the due diligence that I know you all exercise as stewards of their money and their general safety, I encourage you to do that Phase 2 before you agree to a purchasing price. Thank you.
Next written request comes from Bob White.
Good evening, Mayor, council members. I'm Bob White, I live at 1929 Crystal Downs Court in Oviedo, and I'm talking for the Twin Rivers HOA. Three years ago, I came up here and expressed our displeasure with the proposal, opposed development in the Twin Rivers Golf Course, and told you then that the HOA intended to oppose it. I'm back here again this evening, this evening to thank you. Thank you for the willingness to seek an alternative solution to the development, for creativity in identifying solutions that would satisfy everybody, and for the tenacity to bring one of these solutions to fruition tonight. We know that it took courage to oppose the developer, but at the same time, work with the developer to come to this solution, and I think that in the future, we'll look back and see the wisdom of your actions for several reasons. First, the golf course property is a beautiful wildlife sanctuary, an extension of the ECON Protection Area that goes from Highway 419 to the St. John's River, and includes the Little Big ECON State Forest. Second, the property provides for flood relief for Little ECON and Big ECON Rivers, relief that we believe will become more important with further development on the east side of the ECON River in Orange County. Third, by preserving this land, you have given future generations quality of life options that they would not have had you allowed it to be developed. And fourth, the golf course itself was designed by the gentleman Joe Lee, a world-renowned golf course architect and an Oviedo native son. Joe designed over 250 golf courses, including Cog Hill, Doral, La Costa, and Arnold Palmer's Bay Hill. Jack Nicholas said, Joe Lee has never built a bad course. And that is certainly the case of Twin Rivers. Few courses in this area have that kind of pedigree. Joe was also a US Navy veteran, and his plaque is on the veterans tribute wall in Oviedo on the park. Point is, we've got a great golf course built by a great engineer, and it's a native son. It's probably the best course in the area. Regardless of the outcome of the decisions this evening, the members of the Twin Rivers HOA, and I believe the entire city, can be thankful for the council's leadership and the city staff's persistence. Assuming approval of these resolutions on the table tonight, the HOA is prepared to assist you in any way we can in making the golf course a success for the entire city, but recognize that if it turns out not to be so, we are perfectly content with paths to recreational park.
Thank you, Bob. And Bob, it's my understanding you were speaking for the whole HOA? Everybody's okay with that?
Anyone reading that, you're in.
Alright, good. Just want to make sure, because I will close public comments then, and we will move on to the pleasure of council.
Mr. Mayor.
Deputy Mayor.
Mr. Mayor, excuse me, to interrupt real quick, but there's something I think we need to do, since this is a matter that, bonds were issued.
Yes, sir.
The gentleman who spoke saying he was a member of the Seminole County Soil and Water Conservation District?
Yeah, it sounds like a little bit of a setup, but, okay.
I, but I think it's important to clarify whether or not he was speaking on behalf of the entire board or not.
Were you speaking as, for the board, or are you speaking for yourself personally?
I'm speaking as a representative.
No, 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 that's not the question, Ed. Listen to what the attorney is asking.
Better bring him up here.
Yeah, Ed, come on up here. The question the attorney is asking you right now is very important on how you answer it, so think twice before you say what I think you're going to say. Are you speaking for yourself individually, or were you sent here as a representative of the board?
The board has not met since we were reached out on Friday, and I'd like to finish my statement, because we were reached out as, by voters. We are an at-large group, I believe multiple members, I was the only member able to make it tonight on short notice, to offer my advisory and cautions, sir.
Well, I need to ask you a specific question. The Seminole County Soil and Water Conservation District is an entity of government.
Yes.
Did it take an official position about this matter?
No, sir, because that would violate sunshine laws.
That's all the question was.
Which was brought to our attention on Friday.
Okay, that answered my question.
Okay, we're good. So you're here as an individual. You should state that for the record, I'm just letting you know.
Sir, I'm here in my official capacity, I was asked to come here, and we are advisors.
So, you're asked by the board to come here?
No, sir, I was asked by a voter, and part of our duty, we are a unique individual, we are an advisory board.
Which individual asked you to come here this evening?
I'm a Seminole individual, I have to go back to my computer and look.
Could you tell us?
If you give me a few minutes, I could get, I could see if I could pull up my emails.
Okay, we understand. We're good.
I reached out to him as well, I'm not sure who else may have, but I am concerned there's arsenic presence in the soil at the golf course.
Oh, that's your opinion.
That is what the statement that our advisors wrote, we'll get to that later.
Councilwoman? We'll get there.
May I sit down?
Yes, you may.
Thank you.
Alright. So it's quite clear that Mr. Young was here as an individual and not as a member representing the elected Soil and Water Commission Board. Would you agree, Mr. Groot?
Yes, sir, that's what I heard.
Alrighty. I'm sorry, you were about to, yes.
I'd like to make a motion to adopt Resolution 3388-17.
Motion, is there a second?
Second.
Motion second, Council, Deputy Mayor, you have the floor.
Well, I'm not even going to address what I just heard here about stuff like that, if it comes up, fine, but I wholeheartedly, 100% agree with Mr. White and everything that he said at the podium here. I mean, this has been going on for a very, very long time. Whatever, whatever our golf course is, it's not unique, everybody else has a golf course and has the same issues. To me, this is a huge quality of life issue for our city. You know, we hear all the time, stop the development, stop the growth, and I couldn't even imagine myself having lived here 21 years, riding down Lockwood and seeing hundreds of homes there, and get rid of this beautiful course. And, you know, I also feel like, when we get involved in something, that I had no doubt in a few years, that course will be the one that everybody wants to come and play on, because we'll do, just like we did with every other project, we will make it great. It's great now, it just needs, needs a little TLC, but to me, this is an absolute no-brainer, and I am, you know, if it does pass, I will be thrilled and delighted for everybody in Twin Rivers, and everybody in the city, because the key statement was, generations down the road, that Mr. White talked about, we'll say that was a great, great move, so, I am 100% in favor.
Councilman Pollak?
I just got to say that, you know, kind of ditto what he, but Councilman, Deputy Mayor Henken said, but, I mean, this is a great opportunity, these opportunities don't come up very often, and we've, you know, the council and the city has figured out a way to take advantage of that opportunity, and that's what we're doing here tonight.
Thank you. Councilman Britton?
I think it's all been said, I just want to repeat, this is, this has been going on for quite a while. This decision is strategic in my mind, this is going to give us a venue for generations to come. What it becomes, we don't know, but this is a good start. Not doing this is a loss forever, so, I think this is a good move, and let's go forward and see what we can make of this.
Great, thank you. Councilmember?
I like the word strategic that Mr. Britton just used. I'm reading straight from the memorandum from staff, and it says that "the acquisition of the subject property will provide the city with storage pond sites for its utility systems, and allow the city to work toward moving ponds, and blah, 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 and provide its citizens with a wide array of recreational uses, both active and passive." My concern with moving forward prior to doing a Phase 2 is that we don't know if we can move storage ponds to this site, because if we do have arsenic that exceeds levels that are allowed in the ground, and all, pretty much all golf courses do, and our Phase 1 says that this is an environmental concern, we may not be able to do the things that we list as our strategic impact. As it is, we've already agreed to pay 5.465 million for this thing, and have a 10-day study period. So, while I am 110% for purchasing it on some terms, on, in a situation where we don't know what the actual cost will be, when we could know what the actual cost would be, it seems like bad stewardship of taxpayer funds to move forward in that situation.
Thank you.
Oh, and if I could clarify on, on Mr. Young, I did not ask him to come today, I did post on Facebook a little clip, a screenshot from the Phase 1 that the city circulated to everybody up here, so everybody up here is aware that listed in the, on the Phase 1 environmental assessment that concern for the presence of arsenic and, I believe it's petroleum products, were listed. And arsenic really is the big issue.
Okay, great. Well, I read the Phase 1 report also, and let me tell everybody what it said. We're buying a golf course. That's what it said, in my opinion. I didn't read arsenic as the council member did, I read that they found arsenic at the CVS at one point in time, I read that they found there was arsenic found at the.
It's on page 19.
I did not interrupt you, thank you. Mr. Groot, what is your opinion? And then I'll get to Mr. White.
Well, first of all, it's a technical engineering issue, but I read the draft Phase 1, which is what was provided to the city, and I read it to say that the city should be advised that it's purchasing a golf course, and golf courses sometimes have hotspots, but that's what all golf courses have, we, as I understand it, we all knew we were buying a golf course property, and so that Phase 1 said, you're buying golf course property.
Was there anything in that report that gave you pause?
It didn't recommend a Phase 2, that's for sure.
Right, alright. Mr. Wyatt, can I ask you a couple of questions? Bobby, how are you? Real quick, the pond issue was brought up. Now, correct me if I'm wrong, but before the council member served on this council, I believe we were working with CPA John, expanding and moving all those ponds already, were we not?
Yes, sir, we still are.
Any issues come up? Because I don't remember hearing one of them.
Yes, sir.
None, right? No issues whatsoever.
Have you tested to see if there's arsenic? That's really.
We are not at a point in our research yet.
Right, okay, but they haven't raised any red flags yet?
Yes, sir.
Okay, I didn't think so. We own Shane Kelly Park, correct?
Yes, sir.
When we purchased Shane Kelly Park, and we had to take down some barns, didn't we have to do a little bit of cleanup?
Yes, sir, that's my understanding, I'm actually not familiar.
Yeah, you weren't here then, that was Charles Smith.
I was trying to remember if it was, yeah.
So we bought Shane Kelly Park, we saved it from development, we paid more for that land than we're paying for the golf course land per acre, but we had a little bit of arsenic to clean up after we took down the barns. Mr. Cobb, I think that's correct, is it not?
Yes, sir, that is correct.
Right, little surface stuff. Alright, so it happens. We own a dump, don't we?
Yes, sir.
Did we buy a dump?
Yes, we did.
Did we do a Phase 2 on the dump? No, because we monitor it.
I believe only a Phase 1 was conducted.
Right, on a landfill?
Yes, sir.
That we pay 40 grand a year to monitor?
Correct.
Because we have to make sure the stuff doesn't leach out into the other areas, but that was brought as a strategic purchase, because it's 100 acres that connects Shane Kelly Park to OSC.
Correct.
The developers were selling this to Maddy Homes, were they not?
That's my understanding.
Right, okay, so I don't think Maddy Homes would be buying something at the complete hotspot, would you? I know you can't answer that.
I'm not an expert in environmental field, so I can only give you my understanding of things, I can't be an expert in that field.
Let me ask you one last question. Is there anything in that report that raised pause from your staff? Because you've talked to the consultants, we haven't.
Per my understanding, no, sir, there wasn't anything that seemed like a red flag, as you said.
They, there were two little hotspots, if I remember. There was a storage shed and some petroleum.
The maintenance building, the storage shed. Yes, sir.
And the maintenance building was grease petroleum, stuff that they used to store there to work on their golf carts, and the other storage building was where they used to store their fertilizer.
Correct.
Let me ask another question. Unless we change something on the golf course, it just operates as it is, correct?
That is my understanding, yes, sir.
We turn it into a passive park, do we have to change anything?
Not that I'm aware, sir.
Are the restrictions less, as far as the EPA is concerned, for passive park than actually for a golf course?
My understanding is the actual, the thresholds get larger, which is.
For a golf course, right?
Yes, sir.
Right, so the thresholds are larger as a passive park, you could have more pollutants.
Reverse that.
Than you could as a golf course.
That's my understanding.
Right, and then if, of course, if it's development, then it's lower and lower.
I, like I said, I don't know the specifics, but that's my understanding.
Okay, that's fine, that's kind of how it works.
That's outside my area of expertise.
Well, I mean, I, thank you, Bobby. That's all I have. You know, it's. You know, it's... We have been at this for a long time, and, you know, while concerns about what may be in the ground are valid, I'm not going to ever invalidate those concerns. I mean, there's arsenic in every patch of land that's been farmed in this city. What the report did say is that there's no evidence that this land was farmed. The only evidence of where the farms were are where your homes are. So let's hope that whoever built your homes cleared up, cleaned up your land. You know, I live on an orange grove, he lives on a celery field, I don't know what was on Waverly Woods.
I live by the dump.
Yeah, that's right, you live right next door to the dump.
My neighborhood is the one that gets monitored.
That's right.
I live on the cleanest land of all, I think.
You probably do.
Oldest house in Oviedo.
That's right, you're in the high spot, so...
Former orange grove.
No, it wasn't a former orange grove, it was there before the grove.
Yeah, so I mean, and I understand all these concerns. And Mr. Young, you know, as your personal opinion, which you brought up to us, are valid concerns. But, you know, at this point in time, guys, four years into this, if, you know, the owners of this property are at the point right now, and I'm sure that Mr. Cobb can confirm this, and Mr. Groot, where, you know, it's as-is, where-is, buy it, don't buy it, we don't care. Because if we don't buy it, they'll be down here submitting Plan B to us. Mr. Cobb, would you consider it a fairly fair statement from the conversations we've had with them?
That's a very fair statement, and it will be, it will result in immediate closure of the course as well.
Right, if we don't close by April 10th?
Yes, sir.
Well, I understand the councilmembers' concerns, and they're very appreciative to bring them up. You know, at this point, I just think that we've been at it for so long that we just move forward with our purchase because 30, 40, 50, 100 years from now, the fact that we did it will be more important than the fact that we may have had to clean something up. You know, I was here when we bought Shane Kelly, I was here when we bought the dump, I've been here when we've bought lands all over the city, when we've done land swaps with owners, you know, and it's all for the benefit of the city. And there's going to be a slide of the state of the city on Wednesday that's going to impress everybody when you see exactly what your city has done to preserve lands as comparison to other cities. So while the Level Two is nice, you wouldn't even know where to start. It's an 18-hole golf course. Now, Mr. Wyatt, I mean, if you wanted to go out and just test those two areas, I'd have no objection to that. Have you considered that? The hotspots that were mentioned? It's not going to change anything, but, you know, we want to know, we want to know.
You want to know where something is, you've got to look for it.
Right.
And then you'd have to speak to the expert.
But they could test the two hotspots, I mean, you could have that done.
Absolutely, yes, sir.
But the place where the arsenic is, is where fertilizer was properly applied, so it's going to be the greens and the tees, which is going to be the highest place, which presumably is where the rapid infiltration ponds would be moved to. Am I guessing correctly?
The ponds have not been cited. There's no, there's no location for the ponds yet. We haven't got that far in that whole analysis.
How far along are we? Have we been working on this for years?
It's not even part of a, not very far.
So we, okay, so we haven't really thought very far about...
Very long.
Okay, but the strategic impact, though, is that we can park 60 acres of water somewhere on this 300 acres, and presumably it needs to be the higher portions, which presumably is going to be the greens and the tees. And that is where all studies on other golf courses say that the bulk of the arsenic is.
Bobby, do you...
If there is arsenic, which there may not be, we don't know.
We're nowhere near.
Bobby, I don't remember that CPA report showing us parking water anywhere on greens and tees.
No, sir, we, no.
No. So, councilmember, I don't know where you're getting that information. That's not what the CPA report has been working on. The CPA report has been working on expanding the existing ponds and raising the berms on some of them.
My hope would be to look for areas where we would not impact the golf course.
Right.
Mr. Mayor, can I ask one question?
Sure.
I heard something, and I asked Brian if I heard it correctly, and he said I did. My hearing isn't the greatest, but I thought I heard some, a gentleman from the Soil and Water Conservation District say that a Phase Two costs about $100?
Oh, that's... And that would be...
I heard him say Phase Two.
To do a Phase Two on a 300-acre site, Bobby, how much do you think that would cost?
There's no way to determine how many samples you'd do there.
To do soil wardens every 10 yards or every 50 yards?
Yeah, just do one per green.
I mean, it would be significant after a while, would it not?
My understanding is that the soil samples are inexpensive. It's a matter of how many do you want to take?
Well, I got you there, but you have a 300-acre site here.
Yeah, I don't know. As I said before, I don't, that's not mine.
All right. Thank you, Bobby. Well, you know, as mentioned, the ponds that were brought up this evening, the CPA report we have, we're actually looking at expanding the pond that's behind, what's that, Gated Community, Conne Green, I think it is. That's where we were looking at parking some of the water. Mr. Mayor?
Yes. You know, we talked about, you know, making this golf course great, and if, here's what you've got to think. Let's say there was no sale of this, that the current owner is keeping it, and this is what kind of irks me a little bit. So the current owner decides, "I'm keeping the golf course and I'm going to run it." He's not doing any Level Two anything. He's going to keep the golf course and do just what he's been doing for years, and nobody cares about that. And here's the other thing. Let's say, for argument's sake, this place was so contaminated, it was glowing worse than Chernobyl.
Well, they'd all be glowing right now.
Okay. The cost to widen more roads and deal with the infrastructure of the nightmare from thousands of more cars a day would be far crazy, and if there was ever something out there, we would take care of it. But all these other golf courses that get sold, nobody's doing this stuff. I mean, the report we had didn't raise any red flags, and we can say, I mean, there's arsenic in my backyard. Might be by the way I am today, but, you know. But guys, this is, the mayor brought up a great point. This doesn't go through, you guys are getting homes all over the place, and we can fix land. We can fix houses once they're there and the aftermath from it. We've got enough houses in Oviedo. We need more restaurants, we need more fun things to do. This is a no-brainer. But the concerns, I think, are valid, and the first report we had, nobody's raising any concern. CPA wasn't raising any concerns. So this has been going on for years, and this concern, if it was so strong, I want to know why nobody brought it up, you know, since 1989 when they've been, "Let's do a Level Two, let's make..." Nobody cared. It's, to me, it's like somebody doesn't want a golf course. Or others, whatever. But this is, to me, is a no-brainer for our city. This keeps our city beautiful, it keeps people who bought, maybe took their life savings. I want to live on a golf course, and I don't want to see homes now and taking it away. You know, that's not what we do. So to me, this is easy.
Anything else?
I'd appreciate you guys stopping saying this is a no-brainer, because it does require a brain, and if you read the Phase One, there are valid concerns, and the memo that staff generated for our benefit does say that the strategic impact is not to provide a golf course to make the residents of Twin Rivers happy, but it is to park water and to have a multi-use facility that people can enjoy in a variety of ways. A little bit of side research I've done has indicated that a 5.5 arsenic level is okay on a rail-street situation, but 2.1 is the limit in residential. For drinking water, it's 0.01. So our water here in Oviedo has arsenic. I'm okay with it, because that's within safe limits. But to move forward in ignorance on purpose, to choose ignorance when we could just tell these guys, "Hey, we need to do," you know, pick a number, nine soil samples, we'll do, pull random greens out of there, just so we have a baseline idea. Because to tell these people that if we do not purchase this today on the terms that the developer who, one of them lives in the biggest house in all of Seminole County, that we've got unknown investors from New York and a former county commissioner involved in this, to act like these people are so irrational that they're going to tell us to go shove it, and we can't have 30 days to do testing, which perhaps we should have done in the last four years, but my understanding from Mr. Groot is that we do need to involve them to get consent to do this. If the arsenic levels are high, they won't be building on the golf course under any situation, because it'll cost too darn much. So if it costs them too much, it might cost us too much. So all I'm asking is, let's have a longer inspection period, longer than 10 days. Who here has ever purchased a residential home? Quick show of hands, anybody? How long was your inspection period?
All right, but this isn't a two-way conversation.
It was longer than 10 days, most likely. So, yeah, you guys don't agree with me, and I see this is going nowhere, so...
All righty, I'm going to call the question. I'm going to call the question. All in favor of the motion to purchase the golf course, Resolution 3388-17? Please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Opposed, only because of the length of the inspection period.
It's either a yes or no.
Yeah, I guess it's a no, then.
All righty. Four to one, Barbara. All righty, moving on, we're up to Resolution Number 3389-17. Mr. Cobb?
Thank you, Mayor. This is a request for the City Council to approve the sole source procurement of services from SSS Down-to-Earth OPCO LLC. We call them Down-to-Earth, relating to the day-to-day operations and management of the golf course proposed. That was just now approved for acquisition. The city staff evaluated various methods for potentially managing the golf course. As part of the golf course's analysis, the staff engaged discussions with Down-to-Earth personnel as an expert firm that could be considered for selection. And during this process, Down-to-Earth personnel actually conducted an assessment of the golf course that was being, that was considered for acquisition. They also provided a comprehensive proposal for the management of the golf course. It includes the day-to-day management of the course, management of the course, marketing of the course, administrative services of the course. And so the agreement that is provided to you tonight, that as I mentioned before, they will provide all the management, marketing, and maintenance of the golf course. They will also include administrative services, the golf shop operations, guest relations, they were in the restaurant and the kitchen services. At the end of each calendar year, they will pay the, after paying the operating expenses of the golf course and other expenses authorized by the city, they will remit directly to the city all amounts, if any, then in the operating account in excess of $50,000 by wire transfer. They'll pay all operating expenses of the golf course on behalf of the city from the operating account. The city shall provide initial funding of $50,000 for operations prior to the approval of the annual budget and program, and so ensure at all times that the minimum funds are in the operating account. The initial term of the agreement is for three years. After that initial term, the agreement will automatically renew on an annual basis for a maximum of five years. So that would give you a total term of eight years. Both parties have the ability to terminate the agreement. Down-to-Earth will be paid a base management fee of $8,000 per month for the first 18 months. At the end of 18 months, the management fee will increase to $10,000 a month, beginning in the 19th month. Approval, a request for a budget amendment to incorporate the budget for the golf course will be presented at your April 3rd council meeting. It's recommended that the council adopt Resolution Number 3389-17, approving the sole source procurement and agreement for services with SSS Down-to-Earth OPCO LLC. I'd also like to introduce Mr. Nick Dunleavy and Mr. Chris Chibot with Down-to-Earth. They're here tonight and can assist with any questions as well.
Thank you, Mr. Cobb. I have no written request to speak or comment on this item, so I'll move on to the pleasure of council. Mr. Mayor? Deputy Mayor?
I'd like to make a motion to adopt Resolution 3389-17.
Second? I'm sorry, where'd the second come from? Okay, motion second? Sounded like it came from both sides. Who got it?
Keith got it.
Keith got it, all right. We have a motion and a second. Deputy Mayor?
Well, you know, just the second part of this, you know, you buy something, you want to make sure it's going to be well-run, and, you know, in the last couple of years, you know, of course, maybe could have been run a little better, but now we have some total professionals that are going to allow, they get fresh set of eyes on this, and we've got to start thinking positive that, you know, two years from now, we've got the best course around. So I'm very happy that we have these guys coming onboard. They have, you know, a really good track record on the courses that they work with, and, you know, sometimes someone takes a fresh look at something, they pick out things, and all of a sudden, what was kind of just mediocre, wow, this is really great now. So I'm very happy with it. I think staff did a great job vetting this company and others to run, so I think we're in excellent hands, so.
Great, thank you. Councilman Britton?
Well, I just want to say, normally, I'm a little hesitant on sole sources, but I don't really consider this that much of a sole source. We have talked to other organizations that have approached us, given us presentations, and offered their services. What I did like with Down-to-Earth was their commitment to come in and work with staff during the process, as well as talking with them and talking with the actual staff out there at the golf course that had been in touch with them. So I feel very comfortable with this. I think they'll do a good job. I hope you'll do a good job, otherwise you'll hear from me.
And he's out there at least twice a week.
And I, look, I'm still here. I'm not poisoned, okay? But anyway, no, I think this is the best way to go. I think we're going to get a good product out of these folks, and hopefully it'll be a long-term relationship.
Great. Councilmember?
One of the concerns I had with reading through this is the discounts for employees, which would be everybody sitting up here. If we are going to invest 2.1 million dollars, the golf course, as proposed, I don't know if everybody in the audience has had a chance to look at the packet, the city's going to dump about 2.1 million dollars into it, and that does not include 100% of the recommended capital improvements. Am I reading that correctly, from you guys' perspective? I don't know if this is the time to have an interactive conversation or not.
No, it's not.
Okay.
You can ask Mr. Cobb, though.
All right. Does that include 100% of the proposed capital improvements to get this to be a seven-out-of-ten golf course?
Right now, we're looking at ways to fund the entire capital improvements.
Okay, so we're looking at losing in the first three years, we would have to subsidize the golf course to the tune of 2.1 million dollars.
It's possible. I'm not going to say that that's an exact number.
Roughly. I mean, that's what the projections in the council packet shows.
Yes, there's projections.
Okay. So just looking at this, what I start to think is, as a person who, I love that we have the land, I don't like the way we bought it, I don't like that there may be arsenic, but we need this 300 acres, so I have mixed feelings about a lot of this. But what I wonder is, is there any business outside of the golf industry where we could go to them and say, "Hey, we have 300 acres, we will," in a building, "we'll give you free rent, free utilities, and we'll give you $8,000 a month. Can you figure out a way to make this an asset for Oviedo without us also kicking in another 2.1 million dollars over the next three years?" Has that question been asked of anybody? And can we ask that question before we get dead-set on staying the course?
You can.
I'm asking the question. Have we asked it to anybody? And can you guys think of some people we could pitch this to?
No, Councilwoman, we have not asked that question of anyone.
Okay.
We have concentrated on how to maintain the operations of the golf course.
Okay, so this seems like it is something that benefits an ever-decreasing segment of the population, and for the first three years, we don't have a huge budget. It looks like we're overcharging on some of our utilities, so we could take our overcharging and redirect it to keep this in its current use, but the strategic memo impact for why we were going under contract in the first place, nowhere in there is the strategic impact to provide a golf course for the citizens of Oviedo that is subsidized and offers discounted rates for city employees like all of us. Though I may take it up that the rates are really great and the course is terrific. But, yeah, that's just my main concern, the subsidized aspect.
Yes?
Can I just say one thing? I mean, it's okay to disagree, but I don't think that's correct. This isn't just benefiting Twin Rivers. This is benefiting an entire city that frankly is sick and tired of choking traffic, and they're trying to preserve their quality of life. That's what this is about. And I don't play golf, so, you know, I don't care if it's free, and I don't think anybody else cares, but this has to be looked at as a whole-city-wide benefit. When I come out and ride from 419 and I go down Lockwood, I don't want to sit there with another thousand cars. I want to see that beautiful land. Also, if we can work some deal with the perk ponds behind here and we don't have to pay that money, this deficit where we, there's no doubt, the golf course runs at a little bit of a deficit because it hasn't had a Down-to-Earth looking at it. It hasn't had a city staff who wants it to work well. It doesn't have five council members that will go out there and make sure, and some of them play golf, and some of them, to my left, play really well and want to make sure that it's good. So this is not just benefiting a group. When I do something up here, and I would, I'm pretty sure everybody else would, we do it for everybody. This is our whole family here in Oviedo. This isn't just Twin Rivers benefiting, but I am absolutely thrilled for somebody who bought a house on a golf course, was promised that it'd always be there, and had to live with this for four years. I'm losing my view, and I'm going to lose what I worked my whole life for. So this, to me, is everybody in, and again, it is a no-brainer. I'm sorry. Feel like I have to.
Will the city buy the orange grove behind my house and keep it as a golf, as a grove?
Excuse me. You need to be recognized like the deputy mayor has to be recognized, okay? This isn't just a free-for-all conversation up here. There's decorum. Are we good?
May I speak then?
You may, yes.
Well, if the city's going to honor views that are not protected, the situation with the golf course, nobody was properly promised a particular view anywhere legally speaking. Those records have been recorded forever, so to say that we're going to go out and save the day when people didn't go out and do their due diligence before buying on a golf course, thinking that they were going to forever have one, I think I have a right to have my grove forever owned and protected by the city, and that all the people who are adjacent to vacant land, to which inadequate due diligence may have been done, all of those people should be saved as well. And we should set aside an additional $7.2 million to allow people to apply to have their views in the vacant land adjacent to where they live preserved. So we need to treat everybody similarly if we're going to go down this pathway.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
My only concern with this agreement was, what skin in the game does Down-to-Earth have? I mean, I know we can exit the agreement at any time, but I know that there were some that it was kind of a partnership, and there was some sort of sharing of revenues, you know, once they got generated and stuff like that. I didn't see anything in this agreement, any kind of partnership. It was, we're paying them a fee, and then they're managing the golf course for us, and I was hoping to get a little bit more of a partnership with the entity.
There are a number of things that they are doing. One is they are obviously absorbing all the personnel. That's one of the things that they are doing. They are also absorbing a number of the lease agreements out there for the different vehicles, the golf courts, the different equipment. They'll be providing the equipment themselves and operating them and maintaining them. They have also, they'll be putting together a website for the property. There's a number of things inside of, that are, as we've learned, that all these behind-the-scenes things that they're going to be taking in as part of the overall business of it, and they'll be taking, that'll be part of our management fee that we'll be paying to them. There are things that we'll be buying, you know, that we'll be paying for as well as part of the golf course operation, obviously, you know, the supplies and the different, I assume we're going to be buying golf balls now. But, I mean, there are things that we will be paying for as well, that there are, they've already agreed to take on a number of those different lease agreements and things like that, so.
Okay.
Well, anybody else? We've met with a few different operators, and, you know, I can say that in meeting with this particular group, this particular group took an interest more in the course itself and more in getting that course from the three that it is currently to a five, then a six, then a seven. A seven is hard. If you ask them right here, right now, they'll tell you that's hard. That is what our partners to the south, to become more involved in, need to see. They need to see five, six, to even consider using the course more. They do have their practice facility there, they are keeping their practice facility there, they're going to be updating and upgrading some of the entrance ways to the practice facility, is what they had discussed with us a while back. So, at least with Down-to-Earth, I think we have a group here that is going to make a go of it. But, you know, from day one of this, absolute day one, I mean, four years we've been at this, the city has never guaranteed to anybody that this is going to remain a golf course. The only thing we said is we'd give it a go. And I think by employing this particular company, that'll be our best strategy to give it a go. I mean, if the thing is running deficits, not working out, it's going to be a big passive That's been the only promise that, well, three of the members who have been here through the whole thing have made. And I realize that it's very hard for the members to my right, your left, having not lived through this for the four years, have not had the threat of the development coming through, have not heard our city attorney tell us that Plan A is fully defensible, Plan B is less defensible. I understand that you can then sit here, and it's very easy to pick apart what's been done. Because is it perfect? It may not be. But is it the right thing to do as an elected official for this community at large? And that answer is yes. Because we have to worry about the whole entire community, and as I said earlier, Down-to-Earth, if you do a great job after 18 months or a year, you'll still be here. You know, if we're not seeing improvements, you know, we've had that conversation. It's got to be a quick turnaround, guys. You know that. If not, this becomes a big passive park. We'll shut it down. You know, we're not going to sit here and run deficits to keep it a golf course. However, if we can turn it around, if we can get it to break even first, if we then can get it to throw off a little bit of revenue, if we can then get others more involved in it, it could turn into quite an addition to the municipality. You know, another tool in the toolbox, as everyone likes to say. You know, another amenity that we offer. So, Down-to-Earth, I like what you're going to do. I think that your whole entire operation has the best interest compared to some of the others, and, Councilmember, some of the others that were doing, you know, revenue shares and stuff, when you sat and met with them, and we had a couple of them in here, I mean, they really were just more about revenue. That's all they cared about, you know, dollars coming to them. They didn't care about the course. These gentlemen, I think, care about the course. And we'll see. And if not, you know, ball fields, soccer fields, cemetery, biking paths.
Organic farm?
I want, I, my personal favorite, and I have said this before, so it's no, I mean, just think of the driving range as a gun range. Wouldn't that be cool?
Wouldn't you guys love that?
300 yards?
And it came from his mouth!
I've said it before. It'd be awesome. Now, of course, you know, I don't think the Colonel likes that. Put the big artillery out there. But anyway, so, I mean, you know what, guys? I realize that we can sit here and we can pick things apart, I realize that we can sit here and debate to no end, I realize that we can sit here and agree to disagree to disagree. I get it. I respect it, I understand it, but, you know, four years of dealing with this, it's, we're here, it's time to put it to bed, in my opinion. Deputy Mayor?
I just have one quick thing. You know, you talked about the new members, but the new members also have quite a lot of experience in life and living here and everything, and I just want to say, you know, if I can just give you any advice, and we'll be done with this, but this has been a really, you know, hard one over the last couple of years. But one thing that I've learned, and it's hard when you first come up here, I fully have the utmost respect for everybody that's ever sat to my left and right, whether I agreed with them or not. Sometimes we got a little heated, but one thing I always say is that if I'm on the losing side, I'm going to support that winning side because I'm not going to let these guys and the whole city crash the plane, as we've heard. We're all on the ride together. So sometimes you win up here, and sometimes you lose. Early on, I used to take it a little personal, yeah, I want to win that battle. So as you come up here and you find out, sometimes you have some wins and sometimes you have some losses, I think this is a great win, but, you know, my respect for all of you never changes because you're all very smart, but usually, the masses usually get it right, and in the end, when people vote and they go to the polls and they do stuff, that's why you guys are up here. You know, the masses looked at it, and they usually get it right, so let's make this work, and, you know, we're in this together, and I think everybody goes home happy. And the mayor brought up, he took the words right out of my mouth. Councilwoman brought up a very good point, you know, we're going to lose some money here trying to make this work, but we have to try, but we're not going to lose it for long. We can't, because we owe that to everybody else. We can't go out and keep raising taxes to make this work, so, you know, to take a win away, if it doesn't work, then we have a big park, but we're going to make it work. I got a good feeling. It's going to be, we did everything we could do to make it work, so I'm good.
Mr. Mayor, a quick question. Could we come up with an idea now when we will revisit the profitability of the golf course?
Well, you've got to give them at least a year.
Oh, yeah, even if it's after a year, because it looks like the first three years, even they are projecting, and I think you guys are the best company out there. I've paid attention to all the process of getting to pick you guys, but if y'all can't turn it around in three years, even with best practices and all of us kicking, you know, we're kicking in all this capital, at what point do we say, we just can't make this happen? And I guess the question is probably for Mr. Cobb, where is the projected break-even point, where we are no longer putting out and we are instead receiving?
It will, it'll depend on, in talking with the folks at Down-to-Earth, it could be as soon as two years. The first year, they told us, the first year is going to be hard. And, but, it could be as soon as two years, but it will also depend on how quickly we can infuse the capital into it. To answer your question, I think you're, my opinion is, is that you're going to be able to do it annually, because every year, per this agreement, every year you have to approve a budget. And so, approving that budget, you get to have that conversation every year, as long as we're, you know, as long as we're operating this, every year you get to have that, you get to have that discussion. It could be as soon as two years, it may be five years, it could be eight years. It's, a lot of it's going to depend on how well, excuse me, how well we can get, how quickly we can get the capital infused into it, how quickly we can get the improvements. And you've got to remember, this golf course has suffered from what they call corporate neglect, and so we have to overcome that corporate neglect. They've got a lot of good ideas. The manager of the golf course also has a lot of good ideas that aren't expensive ideas that can be done to generate rounds, and that's really where you got to do it. You've got to generate rounds. Right now, it's not generating rounds. The best thing I can tell you is this, we were in a meeting with the director of golf for UCF. Now, UCF is very familiar with this company. Actually, his eyes got very big when we mentioned that we were working with them. And their president is a very, well, I hate to say this as a pun, please pardon it, please, but he's a very Down-to-Earth person. Okay? He's very, very solid in what he does. He does mixed punches. When I met with him, I did not feel like I was with a salesman. And he told us, he was the one that said, you've got a three, maybe a two. We'll get it to a seven eventually, and we can do it by what we do. And when we said that to the director of UCF Golf, he said, if you get it to a seven, we'll start playing there. If you get it to a five, we'll start doing outings there. And that's the thing, that it's got to generate rounds, and they know, they know what they need to do to generate those rounds, and it's not doing it right now, and so.
What are the ideas for where this money is going to come from? Because we don't have a huge budget.
Well, initially, we're probably going to be looking at some inter-fund loans, is what we're going to be looking at, but Mr. Boop and his staff are finalizing that right now. And so, my idea is, is that when you have your budget work session on the 27th, we're going to bring you a plan, and then we'll ask you to approve it on the 3rd, is what we're going to do. So we're still, still fine-tuning the proposal to bring to you, but we will have a plan by the time we get you, can get it for you. But, like I said, to answer your first question.
Maybe two years.
Yeah, that's the soonest. Don't say, Mr. Cobb said two years. That's the soonest it could happen, and there's a lot of variables that go into it, but you'll get to have that discussion every year.
Okay. And is it possible that my colleagues may have consensus to, at least as to politicians, there be no discount for any of us to play? Or maybe even, not even for homeowners? I don't know if we should punt that to later, or if that's a discussion for now? That was.
That would be a budget discussion.
Okay.
They offer discounts, they offer replay discounts. I've got a stack of them. If you pay the $35 to play, you go back, you play for $20.
Well, replay discount is a different thing from you happen to be employed by the city and therefore you get a discount, or you happen to live in that one neighborhood, therefore you get a discount.
I think all city employees should get a discount, eventually.
After it's profitable, but right now, it's not profitable, so to have us subsidizing it to this largesse.
Yeah, but wouldn't that be rounds that aren't getting played now?
Essentially.
Brian, could we, maybe, you know, we're not the experts here, but there is an expert up the road called Dub's Red, that's owned by the city of Orlando. Could we set up some sort of benchmarking or workshop with them and see how they do it? They did something very similar a few years ago, renovated the entire course with, to integrate it into their stormwater system, and that course is hard to get on now, it's played so much. And I'd like to know what they do that is right. I don't know if Down-to-Earth, you guys work on Dub's Red? Okay.
Yes, sir, we can do that.
I think it'd be nice to benchmark, but I don't, I think they give a discount to city residents. I don't think they give them to county residents, but I think city residents get a discount.
It's no different than all our other parks. City residents get a discount. Out of city pays a little higher, so it's going to be one of our parks, why not? And I mean, you know, for me, I, you know, I do, I do sales for a living, and I subscribe to the Southwest Airlines theory. I'll get you there for 100 safely, and you don't have to pay 200. I think that the pricing structure has to be looked at. I'm not an expert in golf, but everything has to be looked at, and Councilwoman brings up a lot of good points, but we can't answer them all in one shot, we just got to see how it goes, you know?
Is that something that, like, the management falls to you guys? I may just be trying to micromanage this thing. I really want to get excited about a golf course. If we do not know how much arsenic is out there, what makes sense for the next short term is to keep it as a golf course and make it a darn awesome golf course.
There you go. Or a passive park?
Well, then it starts triggering the uncertainty. But, yeah, at some point, you have to cross the bridge of, are we going to continue subsidizing? Is it a break-even deal?
Every, 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 no, I'm sorry.
Every park is subsidized to an extent, but not all parks are subsidized to the tune of $2.1 million over three years. That's hefty.
You'd be quite surprised if you looked at the Fox and Rec program budget, but we only recover about 30%, 28%?
30.
30, right? Because that's the level we've set for you.
Yes, sir, it's 30%.
30%. 50% on special events, 30% overall, the operation, because it's a quality-of-life issue. We had that discussion many years ago. All righty, I'm going to call the question. Motion on table is to adopt Resolution 3389-17. All in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Sounds like it's 5-0. All righty, thank you, gentlemen. Go run a good golf course. We have faith in you.
I have faith for about two years.
There you go. All righty, moving along. Old Downtown Regional Stormwater Pond/Post Office Discussion Item. So, Mr. Cobb, I'm going to turn this over to you. I'm assuming staff is coming up with, from what I've read here, it looks like some ideas on the regional pond for pond for the historic downtown, uses for the buildings and blah, blah, blah. Is that about right?
Thank you, Mayor. Yes. If you recall it, your December 5 meeting, you asked us to go and get some information for you regarding what it would take to renovate the post office to make it usable. And some of you, the council members who were here prior can remember, we, at one time, were looking at a major renovation of the golf, of the post office. And it was to the tune of about 1.2 million. And you asked us to go back and say, just look at what it would take to get usable. Mr. Boweare and the facility staff went out and did that. And so they're here tonight to present to you what they've been able to find on what it would take to make it usable. At the same time, Mr. Wyatt and his staff are working with the DOT to expand the Franklin Street Pond for, for, to take in the water, the stormwater for the, for 26, 419 widening improvements. As, also what they're working on is what we call the Regional Stormwater Pond. And that is the pond that we have been working on to create a master stormwater system for the old downtown area. Much like Center Lake Park does for Oviedo on the park, we're trying to recreate something like that in the old downtown. And so he's going to come in behind Mr. Boweare and he's going to explain to you some of the things that we've, we've been looking at regarding the regional stormwater pond. I, for one, have had an issue for quite some time with the whole idea of having a pond, basically a trail that's a berm, and then a ditch that people call a stream, that's straight, which we know Mother Nature doesn't deal in straight lines, and then a pond. And I've always felt that there had to be a better solution there. And so I challenged Mr. Wyatt to do that. And he's come up with an idea. However, it does impact the, it impacts the post office. And so what we'd like to do tonight is have Mr. Boweare give you a presentation on the information you requested. And then have Mr. Wyatt come in and tell you about this idea that we've been looking into regarding the regional stormwater pond. And then get your direction, if you, if you, get your direction on which, a way that you would like us to move forward. So Mr. Boweare, I'll turn it over to you.
Good evening, Mayor, good evening, Mayor and council members. What we did, what staff did was, from your request in December, we went back out and basically went out and got cost estimates to basically utilize, be able to possibly utilize the building as a community center. As you can see, slide one is just a picture of the facility. Slide two is also a picture of the facility from another angle. We move to slide three. About five years ago, or four years ago, I'm sorry, we had Drell and Partners had come in. And at that time, we'd started the process of looking at renovating the facility and/or possibly even tearing it down and completely building a brand-new community center. These are just two depictions that Drell and Partners did. Just another depiction of what they've done. Now, what we're suggesting possibly, what was asked of us, is just what it would cost to bring the building back up to usable standards. The building has a lot of challenges because a lot of things do not meet ADA accessible, as far as the bathroom facilities. Also, parking does not meet ADA. So there's a lot of things, challenges with, with the building. Basically, what we did though is we went in and we looked at multiple different things, which include the HVAC roofing, what it would cost to just basically renovate the entire building, bathroom renovation. There's possibility there's asbestos in the tile floor. Regardless if we demo the building and/or renovate it, we will have to do some due diligence there. And there could be some additional costs based upon what is found there that's not in this report tonight. Basically, after we did all the difference and had all the different groups come out, new sewer line, put in the building on sewer, you know, demoing the old septic field and things like that, the pricing came in about to renovate and bring it up to code to be a usable building, just shy of $400,000. We also added a 15% contingency because, once again, I want to, you know, make sure council understands that these are estimates. Some of these costs with the groups that we had come out and, and checked the building things, the building is not, you know, electricity's on, but not everything's, you know, working. AC's not functioning right now. They came out, they did the best they could as far as what, you know, estimate cost could get it up and operational. So there are some things that could actually come in higher. There's some of these costs that could actually come in lower. As part of this, we also wanted council to realize that if we did, you know, renovate the building and possibly utilize it in the future, if we utilize the building as a regular facility, recreation facility as we do now with the gymnasium, aquatic facility, Riverside Park, Center Lake Park, annual cost could be up to, at least in the first year, until we get, you know, operating and things like that, could run around $400,000 a year. Now, that figure can change depending on how council decides to move forth. I mean, you know, the building can be utilized less hours. That's, that's a normal seven, eight week operation, you know, nine, 8 o'clock in the morning till 9, 10 o'clock, according to rental use and things like that. That's something that can be discussed at a later date of how the building can be utilized or not utilized according to what council decides as far as renovation, that type of thing. One thing I did want to make note is, and Bobby's going to discuss the, as far as the demo portion, one of the items that had not come in price-wise was the demo of the septic system. And that cost is, is, it's not a huge cost, but it's additional $2,630 it would cost us to demo it. So then we could go forth with, you know, the entire demolition of the building. Now, basically, I'm available for any questions that might, you might have.
Thank you, Drew. Any questions?
What's the annual cost of Center Lake Park?
Oh, off the top of my head, I do have in my budget book, but I do believe off the top of my head right now, that's a higher cost center. I want to say $350,000 plus with staffing. But I have my budget book. I can find that out.
Well, that doesn't have to be precise. But this is, you're showing 400 here for this one facility.
That's based upon, that actually was based upon more like Riverside Park than it actually is at that center.
Oh, okay.
Anything else? Nope. Thank you, Drew.
Thank you.
Okay, Bobby.
I was hoping for a good segue from Drew's part. I have one, so I'm just going to slam on the brakes and take a hard right.
You've got a PowerPoint, it looks like.
Yes, sir, I do. It should be part of the same one that's up there. Next slide. Okay. I'm going to start from the beginning. So just to give you some background on the whole regional stormwater pond. This is the existing condition that's out there right now that everybody's familiar with. Or, I'm sorry, it's not the existing because we know construction's going on. But this is the original condition. That Franklin Street Pond, Post Office site, Sweetwater Creek. This is what everybody's known for years back even when I was a kid. As we know, construction is underway right now to widen the pond for the 434 Phase 1 widening. Here is a comparison between the existing pond and what's been and what's going to be. The black outline is basically as best I could draw it in where the existing pond is. Blue, the light blue is going to be where the pond is going to be when it's completed. As you can see, there's still a little bit of upwind that's going to be protected off to ease towards the round valve. Here is your first wind stream, what the pond would look like and where it's going to be. As you can see, it's kind of about 30% right now. That's, there's a split line that's going down the middle. That's where Sweetwater Creek is. See an idea of what the regional stormwater pond is supposed to work for? It's a 28-acre drainage basin in red. That's what, that's what the, the area that the pond should treat. So any development that takes place in there in theory would be able to drain that pond. That's the idea. I know this slide's kind of hard to see based on a scale, but I wanted to give you a representation of, as Mr. Cobb mentioned earlier, the frustrations of the look and the functionality of the site. This is what you're going to have. You have the regional pond, there are most of the problems. Then you have the Franklin Pond, as we call it. The uses are a little off. Doesn't, to me personally, I think we can do better.
Talking to the mic, Bobby?
Oh, sorry about that. From a functional standpoint, it just doesn't, I think we can do better. So I, well, next slide, Linda. Couple considerations for the regional pond. As I mentioned, the, oh, I guess I should back up. People have asked, why can't you just combine the creek with the pond and make it function that way? It's because, probably I think it was wrong, you know? The creek, Sweetwater Creek acts as a basin in itself. All the land from the south coming up collects into the creek and so in itself is a basin. In order to treat it properly, you have to have sufficient room to do that. You can't combine a regional pond and Sweetwater Creek together and have sufficient room. It just won't work. There's not enough spacing. Did I get it? All right, thank you. So we can't combine. That's, that's the big challenge. We are facing wetland mitigation on the regional stormwater pond site towards the, I think it's the north and west section of the site. And that could be up to $300,000 potentially in mitigation costs. We have applied for a Section 319 grant of $500,000 for future construction to go towards the site. The good news is our funding source is third generation sales tax. I've already planned it in the five-year, a couple of years out. Got some money sitting there waiting for it. Again, our land usage, once constructed, how are we going to make this thing work? That's a big concern of mine. And then again, we have the post office facility. Are there ways to make this site work well for everyone? And so I believe in the next slide, here is the grand idea, something that we want y'all to think about. Although we can't combine the creek with the pond, we can relocate the creek. And what we do by that is we take it to the west, bring it around the site, hook it back in, have one large expanded pond where we combine the Franklin Pond with the regional stormwater pond. And, but in the process, that takes out the post office in order to do that, to make it fit. The idea that I've, I've had, discussed it with Mr. Cobb, discussed it with our consultants, is that we could turn this into, maybe not Center Lake Park, but it would be like a passive park, something similar that may start, have a similar effect for the historic downtown that Center Lake Park has obviously had with the new downtown. Considerations for the combined pond would be, of course, relocating the creek. Something I have to do, depending on how council decides tonight, I have to get with DOT. Although we own all the, we own all the land where the new pond is being constructed for the Phase 1 widening, DOT has a certain use for it. So I would need to get with them just to get permission to expand the pond. I don't see it as a big issue. I think it'd be pretty easy. But it's something I have to do. I have to fair it with them. We do have permitting we have to conduct, St. John's and the Army Corps of Engineers. Wetland mitigation, as I already mentioned, post office building is going to be an issue. If we demolish it, it can be a part of the regional stormwater pond project and we can use that funding source. I don't know if Mr. Boweare had mentioned it earlier, but the demolition cost for the post office, I think for everything, is $52,000. So our thought to you is to present this idea for your consideration, see what you think, to see if, because I'm at that point in design right now, I've got to make a decision to go one way or the other. Either design it as you saw early on and continue forward, or to change course and go with the, kind of the master pond. One thing I would comment to you, I want you to know is, regardless of what you decide, I'm still going to try and make this look the best we can, using our consultants. We still want to make it a good, either way, some kind of passive park utilization. So just, that's for your consideration to see what you think.
What's your timeline?
Well, just before I go to questions, if you could just clarify one thing for the council.
Sure.
Because I bet you we're all thinking the same thing. I mean, this is obviously just a discussion item. We're not making any decision tonight. So what is your timeline? What is your preferred timeline for knowing an answer from this body? And what is the outside timeline for knowing an answer from this body?
I kind of need to know now as far as design goes on the, on the...
Well, you're not going to find out now, so...
Okay, well, within the next few months?
Okay. So within 30, 30 days, ideally, 60 to 90 is what we could take.
Yes, sir.
Because this is, this is a major departure.
Understood.
Okay. I'm sorry, councilman.
That was my same question. What's your timeline?
And I guess my second question with Brian is, does this meet the requirements of the agreement we had with the previous owners? I did see an email from Lonnie, but did we approach them with this? And have we had a discussion with the previous owners?
We have not had a discussion with them. I did ask Mr. Group for an opinion on how he, if he felt that this alternative would be in keeping with the agreement. And obviously you can tell from the, from his opinion that he does. We did provide the owner, the, we did provide the folks with the, who are our party with the agreement with a copy of the packet for tonight. And we said that we would, this was just a discussion item and that we would be seeking direction from the council. I felt like meeting with them at this time would have been premature because we didn't know how you all felt about it. And we didn't want to create any type of preconceived concern that, once we knew what you all wanted, then we could go and we could have frank conversations with them. So that, but we did provide them an advanced copy of the staff report.
Okay. I, you know, I just, I'm going to have to sleep on it, to be honest with you. But it looks like potentially it could be a, an anchor for the, I'm going to say the north end of, of the city to connect with the southern end of Oviedo on the park. So it might be a nice, good amenity eventually.
One thing I did want to remind council is that last, February 28th, we applied for RTP grant, Relative Turtles Program grant. And if we were funded, that grant can be utilized regardless if it's, if we, if this body decides to keep the building and/or if you were to decide to demolish, we can still utilize the funding either way.
Okay.
I just want to let you know that. And that's a matching fund. It's $400,000.
Great. Thank you, Drew. Anybody else? All right, Bobby, I have a few questions if nobody else has any. Good? All righty. Let's just talk this through for a second. Can we have the, the slide that, with the combined pond/park concept, Linda?
This one just before.
All right. Well, Linda's working on that, Bobby. This looks like it's a, a bigger pond than the other configuration. Does this cover more land area that can drain into it?
Potentially, yes, sir. It's combined. I don't know how much, that calculation has not been determined yet, but yes, it would be larger.
Okay. So this is, this is larger. So more of the historic downtown could conceivably, we don't know yet.
Yes, I don't have the number yet, but yes, sir, conceivably.
All right. Let me ask another question. The upper left-hand corner is the, says existing wetland. Whose is that? Was that part of the land swap or is that still part of the other one?
Yes, sir. That is owned by Mr. Booth.
Okay. Could that be used as part of the pond if we had some way of acquiring it?
I believe so.
Paul, could you come on up for a second? We're not going to hold you to this, Paul. I'm just thinking out loud for alternatives for lots of discussion. How are you tonight, Paul?
Fantastic, sir. How are you?
Doing great. That existing wetland, could that be used as part of the pond if the city owned it?
It could potentially, but as Bobby identified before, that would also need to be mitigated for through St. John's and through Army Corps of Engineers.
Okay. So that, so it'd be cost?
Correct.
All right. And Bobby believes this pond's a little bit bigger. Do you concur with that, that it would?
It's a little bit bigger than those two ponds combined. But, but again, this is the concept. So it hasn't been fine-tuned in our design.
All righty, thank you.
Do we have to mitigate within the Lake Jessup Basin if we were to impact that wetland?
Correct.
And are there any place, are there mitigation opportunities within this basin at, at this time?
Yes, there are. We've been, as part of the, the design of the current regional stormwater pond, we have already investigated those opportunities.
And what's the price of that versus going one basin over?
Well, you can't go one basin over.
I know. But I'm just kind of wondering, like, what kind of cost are we looking at impacting that wetland versus going one over?
Because Lake Jessup does not have any traditional mitigation banks, your mitigation costs are higher. So you're probably looking at double the cost roughly to a little bit more than that if you were in a basin like the Wakiva Basin or the Ecom Basin.
So we're not able at this point, even with the current design, to build that regional stormwater pond without impacting any wetlands? Is that correct?
That's correct.
Even if we knock down the, at the post office and change the shape?
Yes. If you knocked down the post office and shifted the pond to the south, in the current design, you would still impact some wetlands, correct?
Okay.
Yeah, it says mitigation costs about in excess of $300,000. Yeah, it says mitigation costs about in excess of $300,000.
Correct.
That's.
It's about one credit of, I don't want to get too technical.
That's okay.
It's one credit that you'd have to purchase.
$300,000 for a credit, huh?
Again, because it's in the Lake Jessup Basin and the Lake Jessup Basin just does not have as many mitigation opportunities.
Hmm. But you feel that the bigger pond may service a little bit more acreage?
Right, and you're, you're gaining some efficiency too because you have one pond as opposed to two separate ponds, you get a little bit more volume out of having one pond. It's more efficient design.
Now, you got the, the lake squiggling around, you know, and Paul, I know a couple of years ago when this was just a, a concept and an idea, you know, we talked about piping that thing under the, under the pond. Is that a possibility? Instead of squiggling it around, can you just pipe it underneath there and that way it leaves some of that land and maybe?
You wouldn't be able to physically pipe it underneath the pond.
Okay.
That would be, it would be too complicated. The pond is a wet pond, so it has certain depth to it, so to try to go under it?
And then how would you get it to come back on?
Yeah, it'd be impractical.
Be impractical. Now, not for anything, but wasn't all this like hand dug at one point to drain into this creek to go up into?
Yeah, exactly. I mean, many, many years ago.
I seem to remember getting a tour from Mr. Wheeler many, 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 many years ago and being told that it was hand dug.
Well, that I'm not sure if it was hand dug, but certainly.
Not, 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 I don't know about the, the side that we're talking about, but certainly the south side, to drain out the, the wetlands down there, but boy, what a mess that created. Should've just left it wet. Alrighty, well, I guess that answers everything that I have for now. Anybody else? Deputy Mayor?
Good, good.
Councilman?
Was there, was there an opportunity instead of impacting the, the wetland to go north of the, the bank over there on the other side of the road at all?
Into drive part where it says trailhead?
Hmm?
As far as using the, the low ground bank parking lot?
No, the, it's, it's north of.
They own that though, so we'd have to come up with some kind of, you know.
Right, but what's the, what's the trade-off there?
I don't think there's enough room. Mr. Lee and I have had discussions about possibly working in some kind of effort in the future to work together to make an even larger pond at some point, so to work with them. But again, it depends on how, what council decides as far as moving forward.
Okay. I didn't know if maybe there was a way to not have the impact on the wetland and, and move, move over and kind of work that as a?
Well, a couple of considerations, one would just be simple hydraulics as to how to get to it. And then the second thing is there, there isn't quite, if you look at the, the size difference, there just isn't enough area there to really make that work effectively to get the bank for the buck if you want.
Right.
Councilman, the meetings that I have sat in on, because we have been working with the bank and how to best, or really to best provide for redevelopment of their property and make it work together, all of those discussions have involved having ponds on both sides of the street. The bank property wasn't large enough to replace the pond on, on the west side, so even if we did.
Right, and I, I wasn't asking to replace the pond, I was asking to keep the pond from going more into the, the wetlands to the, to the west.
I think one thing, and gentlemen, if I, if I'm incorrect, please state, but with what you're proposing with, with that concept up there, there's wetland impacts, but they're less than what we would be looking at on the, having the two separate ponds. Is that, is that a correct statement?
You know, Brian, it, it would be very close. It may be slightly less, but, but.
I mean, that was, my understanding about bringing it all south was to try to lessen the impact to the wetland system.
Correct, so two things. One, in the current concept that's up there, the well and impacts would be pretty much the same as what we had proposed in the original design. Second part of that is, again, if you shifted the original design to the south and impacted the post office, yes, the well and impacts would be reduced.
Is there a way to figure out a calculation for how much bigger, how many, how much more acreage we could take in by, maybe it is worth it to max out this pond, figure out if we can acquire the entire wetland and relocate the wetland and have a pond within reach to, to create something better? Just throwing it out there, I don't know that I'm in favor of this.
You're, you're right, I mean, the idea was master stormwater.
Yeah, we need master, we need master stormwater, that would be a better scenario than what we have now and it would be way better for water quality. It'd be bad for wetlands, but it'd be better for, for some other stuff, so give and take.
One advantage, one of the positive things about this that, that hasn't been mentioned is because we're in the Lake Jessup Basin, as you all may know, you're part of the Basin Management Action Plan for Lake Jessup, so this would immediately provide benefit to Lake Jessup, which the city could in turn use to apply to their BMAP obligations, so there is a benefit there as well.
How hard would it be to get that calculation though? Like, suppose we could have true master stormwater, how would that change what we were able to do in downtown Oviedo and historic downtown? Like, I'm just looking for like, if we can get another acre pond, then we can drain another five acres of land without retention ponds on site?
We could acquire more analysis by Mr. Lee.
Okay.
Change the scope, additional work.
Alright. So there's enough time probably to get that information and maybe bring in the, the donor of, you know, who has evolved in crafting the agreement that's limiting the land at this time, because I think we need to involve that person, that, that group in coming up with a plan that works for everybody.
Yeah. Guess why we're having this conversation tonight? The kickoff. Yes.
Hey, I'm just, you know, just my thought. Bobby, you asked a question, do we like this, assuming that we could work out a deal with the previous owner, because four years ago we bought this, it's been sitting there for four years, we're not doing anything with it. This to me has so much more appeal for future business. We need the stormwater, $465,000 to rehab that post office and then $400,000 a year. Getting back to councilwoman worried about deficits and budgets, we, we need this money for other stuff. We have more, more facilities and things now that people could go that we didn't have four years ago. So for me, this is a, a brilliant idea. We need it. If it can be worked out, I would say march on. I'm not a fan of, of rehabbing that building. I wasn't a fan of purchasing it because I, I knew it would sit there. I think this, this, I never thought about this. I figured maybe we would just rebuild it, you know, knock it down, rebuild the building, but do we really need another community center? We have a gem, right? No Vito on the park that everybody's using, we still have Riverside Park, we have the Aquatic Center, we got all kinds of places that people can meet, so to me, assuming you can work it out with the former owners and we have an agreement on the books that we can only use it for certain things, if they would be, you know, agreeable to do that, I, I like it the way you drew it, so. And the mitigation, if you think, you know, $300,000, so we have to buy that one point, right? $52,000 to knock it down, we're done. You know, as opposed to this ongoing, paying it for four years, ongoing, who knows who's going to use it. This has much more benefits for, for many years to come, so I like it. I think it's good.
If the council did decide that this, that this can add into the areas to take out the post office building, that would be part of one giant project.
Right. I mean, because you're going to have, you know, when the old downtown gets, you know, they have a plan for that, when that gets done and everything's done, you're going to have to dump this water somewhere. And, you know, parks lets us become a city of more parks. We have more, we have it, they're, they're easy, people love parks. So to me, this is good, but you have a lot of people to ask and make sure they're on board and I like it. It's good.
Bobby, can I ask, oh, I'm sorry, Bob, I'll get you in a moment. Just a quick question, you know, we have that, that land north of Franklin, west of Division, you know, the parking lot?
Yes, sir.
You know, that nobody ever parks in. Is there any value to making that into pond? Or is it just too small?
I would have concerns over because it's a regular triangular shape. Paul might tell me otherwise.
Water doesn't like triangles?
Paul? I think it's, I think it's limited in the size.
Oh, okay.
My thought had been, it's a parking lot, you know, it's, our way to search conserve that use. And some other advantages, we do have water and sewer available readily for the site, so that does help.
Hmm. Well, I'm just, you know, I'm, I'm looking at that up there, maybe it would enable us to shift that way, you know, and save the building.
See what you're saying, take out the whole, expand into the upland that's being preserved as part of the Phase One construction.
Well, not too far, because, you know, you can go, you know, shimmy a little bit and make that nice walking trail and trailhead still and then use across the street for whatever you lose on the bottom.
Yes, sir. One thing I understand about this picture, this is totally concept.
I understand, I understand it's not engineered, I'm just, we're, we're throwing ideas around.
Yes, sir.
Alrighty, well, who knows? Anything else, guys? I guess we all have to sleep on this, I'm sorry.
I just have one more question. So, I mean, we've all seen where it's at right now, so the, from a decision standpoint, I mean, are you still going to be able to continue working on what you're doing or, I mean, at what point are you going to have to stop work to wait for a decision?
We're kind of at that point now where Paul needs to go forward with permitting. So I need to either keep going forward where we are right now or change course.
Well, can, can you meet with the partners then that we have in this now that we've had this conversation, Mr. Cobb?
Yes, sir.
I think that needs to be a priority and let's get, gather some thoughts and then bring it back to us. Anything from anyone else? Can't see. Okay. Alrighty, thank you. Oops. Hang on, guys, I'm sorry. Alrighty, next item up is another discussion item, historic preservation. Mr. Cobb?
Hi, thank you, Mayor. This is a request for council to provide direction regarding a policy to address historic preservation of buildings and structures in the city. At your December 5th meeting as well, the council asked for us to take a look at the opportunity of historic preservation in the city. Councilwoman Sladek has been working with the staff regarding various approaches to developing a historic preservation program and so we wanted to bring those to you tonight and give you an opportunity to discuss those programs. Dr. Correa is here, she can also address any questions regarding them.
Alrighty. Thank you, Mr. Cobb. So basically, open discussion on direction from this body, is that what you're?
Yes, sir, we would request, we would request direction on whether or not you would like us, if you'd like us to move forward with historic preservation, is there an idea of how you'd like us to move forward, but then also whether, whether or not you want us to move forward?
Who wants to kick this off?
I'll do it.
Okay.
This doesn't cost us anything, but it could do some really terrific things for, for people who want to preserve old things in Oviedo. I don't see any downside. And the limits for the current situation are that we have people jump through a bunch of hoops and at the end of the day, you are dubbed a historic building, but you get no benefits and you get no special considerations, you just are an old building. So this would add into the land development code over time, or really, I guess that's what the discussion is about, should it be something that is added into the land development code or should it just be a series of individual developer agreements, more or less? So I guess we need to talk about that. From, from my perspective though, I, I think the ultimate end goal that would result in the most economic benefit for this town and for the people who are in a district, and this would be a voluntary district, people would have to choose to come in, the most benefit would come from having eventually something in the land development code that is an overlay, because we can take that and apply for grants with it. If we just have essentially the legal form of spot zoning where people that are not contiguous opt in, that does not give us the same opportunities as far as funding goes.
What kind of district? What type of area?
Pretty tiny. If you look at the map, I'd say you could probably walk end to end in less than 10 minutes and it lines right up with where the CRA ends and where I think the boardwalks may eventually lead, once we figure out all that stuff. So I think it would be a really neat opportunity for, for us to tie in with the old development, we need to tie the old and new together, which we really ought to think about doing before all the old development is not there anymore. But there, there've been quite a few people who have chosen to preserve and who seem at least, I first mention of this, interested in being involved in it.
My, my concern, my concern is, once they opt in, they're locked in.
Yes.
And so I, I, I have a, I have an issue with that and the fact that there, there should be a, a way out or an escape clause if all of a sudden you realize you've gotten into something that is.
Why? Well, there is an escape clause in any historic district ordinance and in a developer's agreement, there is always an escape and a, I don't remember how exactly it's phrased, but if, if you look at the draft ordinance, if it becomes economically unfeasible to keep a building standing, you can go and say, look, I've got a financial hardship, I really, I gotta bail on you here. Or you could demolish it or you, you can, you can do the things you need to do.
Defining a financial hardship is kind of difficult sometimes because your financial hardship might be different than mine or the next person. It's hard to define that, but I, you know, I mean, one of the things that I was thinking about when I was going through this was, you know, maybe a change of ownership, but that can be difficult because you can do all sorts of legal stuff to change the ownership and then, you know, get, get yourself out of it. But the, you know, I, I have that issue with it and, you know, and it, to me, it just seems like more additional regulations for these, for these individuals. I mean, I, me personally, I mean, if I have one of those houses, I could not see the upside to, to bringing myself into this.
Then don't do it. I mean, that's, that's the beauty of this situation.
But why, I mean, we're, we're going through this whole, I mean, are there going to be, are there going to be enough residents?
Are there carrots? Are there enough carrots to do it? Yes. If this body creates the carrots, there will be. And one of the things that we can do is say, you know, if you convert your use from, say, residential, probably you guys are better speaking on this than I am, some of the things that we can legally do under, you know, by tinkering with the land development code, we can add a little bit of leniency if somebody converts use from residential to commercial and say, you know, our parking code usually requires this, but since we want to encourage redevelopment and continued use of these old buildings, instead of making you have eight parking spots, we'll let you have six. Little things like that, which for some people could be a huge deal. And one example of that, when we met with a person from Stanford, there was a developer and it was all, was it all vacant land? That, or, or like, there was like one historic building and then like a whole bunch of vacant land next to it, just the one building was in the historic district and the rest was not. They opted the, the vacant land into the regulated portion because the regulations were so favorable that it made more economic sense for them to do that for their entire project. So, the way Sanford has done it, and they're very, very strict and I don't know that we'd want to go, I wouldn't want to go that route, but the way, the way they do it, there's contributing structures and non-contributing structures and the rules within the districts, and, and this is like, you know, eons down the road for, for Oviedo, because we'd have to have a contiguous district to begin with, but the rules, once you opt in, they apply to the new and old construction. And it was, it was just a very interesting concept. I had not thought about how that could impact people developing adjacent to historic properties who may acquire them and want to, you know, develop next to it.
Have the, the residents in this area been, has anybody discussed this with any of them?
Yeah.
Is, is there like a majority of them that are, that show favor to this or?
What would, what would you tell them we're doing? I mean, at this point, that's why I think this discussion item is so critical, because until there's some idea of what we're doing, how can a person decide if they'd like to have that set of rules apply to them? It's one thing to have essentially developers' agreements and quite another to have an overlay where we ask people to opt in, but they're only eligible within an overlay versus a self-selected anywhere in town methodology. But I did stop by Orange Door on the way back, she's like, man, I wish this would have been in place when I was developing, because, you know, I could have done this and that and the other and, and I was pointing out some of the state level opportunities for tax abatements and things like that and it's money, money that could be in business owners' pockets.
I don't know, I, I, I mean, I hear the, the carrot, the, the carrots that you're talking about, but I, I don't know, I, I've still got some, you know, I'm, I'm all for keeping, you know, keeping items historic, but at the same time, I'm, I'm, you know, I, I feel like the landowners still should have that choice and, and once they opt in should have that choice. And then, once they opt in, maybe not understanding it, then they're stuck.
Oh, there'd be, it would be impossible not to understand. I would imagine Mr. Groot would make sure of that and this body. But we can't have them going in and out like that. If you come in to get some perks and you get the perks and you say, "Ah, now I'm out." Well, that ain't right.
Dr. Correa, can you add anything to that about opting in and out? And if you can explain to the body how this area was determined. I mean, I would think that we would, we would want an area like Sanford has that is mainly homes. If we were going to have an area, why are we, why are we putting this in the, in a commercial district?
So, actually, the map was requested by Councilwoman Sladek. This was the area that she was referring to. And this is the, has some historic structures on it. We discussed two approaches. One would be the historic district. We invited Kristen Dalton. She's the Historic Preservation Officer for the City of Sanford. Sanford has a different situation. So, historic districts are usually planned for cities that have a mass of buildings to be preserved. That is the idea of a historic district. I don't think we have, you know, a mass of buildings here in the city to justify a historic district. Usually, they are mandatories, mandatory programs. That's how the City of Sanford has it. And they have developed this program for more than 10 years. So, the idea of a voluntary historic district, we have discussed. We haven't found cities to be able to check what the programs are, how they are run, and how could we use the same concept. The other idea that we discussed is historical landmarks. So, we would set up a set of criteria. And if the structure would be eligible, would pass the criteria, then what we could do is give some flexibility in the code for historic landmarks. And the Orange Door Gallery would be a good example. When converting from residential to commercial, right now, we have the small-scale site plans. So, we give a little bit of flexibility with the application fee. But the standards are the same standards for any development in the city. So, we could give some flexibility as to parking, as to landscaper, as to satpacks. We could work with, with the applicant if the idea is to facilitate preserving the structure, but also giving a better use. So, in a situation that, in this area, for instance, that we want to have residential development being, or properties being converted to commercial. So, these were, I think, the landmark, the historic landmark, would be more appropriate for the City of Oviedo, because then we were not defining a historic district. And it could be used anywhere in the city. If you have a structure that would pass the criteria, we will have to sit down and write the criteria, then they could be eligible for some flexibility of the code.
Thank you.
How many of these structures have the building materials, because a lot of these, I mean, I've seen a few of them that have been truly restored, but most of them have been, have been modified to the point where you would really have to, you would have to do some significant work to get them back to the historic.
What's it hurt to let them try? That's all I'm asking. Let these people try. The Orange Door did not have to go through all they did to keep that in its current situation, but they did. And we've got three buildings on the National Register here. Those people do not need to go through what they're going through, but they just want to. If we can figure out a way to get them some kind of perk out of it from state-level funding, why on earth would we not try to unlock that opportunity for them?
Anybody else?
You know, it's good to go after perks, I guess, but I'm not sure how that would work. It's no guarantee. I saw some stuff in there about tax breaks, but again, there's no guarantee.
We can choose to just do that at the municipal level. We don't even have to-
And we can choose not to do it. That's what I'm saying. There's no guarantee. I'm looking at the map and I see a lot of 2008 house next to a 1950 house. So, I'm not, I'm not quite sure what defines a historic building. How old does it have to be? Or does it have to have a precedent limit?
There was a survey that the city did, and I think the criteria at that point, and this, I think, was done in 2006, '08?
'08.
And I think the, at that time, the criteria was a building which has more than 50 years of age.
50 years, okay. So, 16, 17 years.
But I mean, that would be something the city could define. What is the, it could be age-
Well, just because it's an old building, though, does that make it-
Sorry?
Just because it's an old building, does that make it historic? Or by definition? How does that work?
No, I think that's, that we would have to come with a, with a criteria.
Okay.
It would be either-
Well, it's determined by the National Park Service standards. And a lot of these buildings are already listed on the State's Master Site File. So, it's a very formulaic sort of a scenario that determines which would be eligible for something like this. But as I'm just counting up on here, there's maybe 11 or 12 buildings. They're actual possible contributing structures. And the way this got, you know, so big is, I just said, "Let's make it big enough to include the Lawton House," which actually doesn't count as a contributing structure. Or, I shouldn't say not a contributing structure, but it has been altered so much from its original situation. It's wrapped inside and it has, it's got a lot of alterations. So, it's not eligible to be on the National Register. But I think incorporating that and trying to tie the new downtown all the way over to the Lawton House and figuring out a way to make that open more often, that would be such a great thing for our community, to just have a little 10-minute walk there, 10-minute walk back from Oviedo on the park. It's right there. And there are some little commercial places. There's a surprise commercial location at the intersection of Graham Avenue and Lawton, which is right across from the bus ramp of Lawton. And there's commercial all down there. And the future land use, from what I understand, talking to staff, a lot of these buildings that are residential, their future land use isn't going to be residential. You know, over time, they may convert. So, to get something in place where when a person is at the point of making a decision, "Do I keep this building up or do I knock it down?" To have some reason to let it, people are looking for excuses to do the right thing. And it's free for us to give them an excuse to keep a historic building that may have meaning to our community standing.
Is it free to apply to be on the registry as a historic landmark versus being in a district?
That's a beautiful question. I never thought about that. We should let people for free come into the district, or whatever is a landmark there.
You described the historic landmarks versus being in a district. So, individuals could, if they're in a house they think is historic, they can apply to be a historic landmark?
They could apply. If they meet the criteria, then they could have an incentive to preserve the building.
And then, what does that designation give? Does that have the same perks?
The existing one does not. We would have to alter.
I don't think it gives the access to the grants for the state. That's my understanding, right? The individual historic landmark.
Tax advantage in the state?
You can only get that if you're in a contiguous mandatory district. So-
Well, you have to be a certified-
Certified local government.
Local government. You know, Megan, I'd like to help. I just don't see anything contiguous about this. I see a hodgepodge, but I, I think individuals, if they feel so, let them go. And then, maybe someday, they'll, it'll morph into a contiguous bunch. But I see a bunch of 1950 homes, I'm sure, might be cinder block, might be wood, next to 1980 homes.
Yeah, they're, at the bottom, at the southern portion of this, that's all, pretty much all block. Then you go into the wood frame and then up by Lawton Elementary, you've got wood frame vernacular. It's actually kind of historically significant stuff over there.
Go across the street through the, anything else, Keith?
No, that's-
I was just saying, there's, there's actually more across the street and around the, up-
You mean, like Trelonian Institute and stuff?
There, well, there, you know, when you go up Lake Jessup, or, yeah, Lake Jessup over there, there's some historic-
Then it gets way less potentially contiguous. So, this isn't intended to be the final map or anything. It's just kind of looking and saying, "Where's the old stuff? What makes sense to tie into the new downtown? What is going to make sense once Broadway has a new front street of road?" Or, you know, when there's a new front row on Broadway, what's going to be left? And there is some historic stuff there that people may want to preserve and turn into something cool and kitschy.
That's a question. Would a district put any restrictions on, say, widening of Broadway or Central?
No.
That we have, in the plans?
Well, I, I want to hear that from staff.
Okay.
Or, I want to hear that from Mr. Groot. Or, if we don't know the answer, we need to know the answer to that. Well, a lot of what, a lot of the questions you have, it depends upon what your code says.
Exactly.
So, how you create your own code. I mean-
What do you mean by that, Lon?
What I mean by, well-
Let's say we set up this district, and Councilman Britton brings up a great point. We set up this district and any one of these properties decides that they want to join the district. They start to take grants from the city to fix, from the state to fix up their home. They've opted in. Now, the state wants to come in and widen Central. What happens?
The state comes in and wants to work?
How do they acquire the right of way from a house that's in a historic district that now has a landmark and has taken state grants?
It'd be more difficult to take the right of way. I can tell you that.
But they can't get state grants. The only way you can get a state grant is if you are in a mandatory contiguous certified local government. Like, there's a lot of steps to that.
Councilmember, let us ask the questions, because that was the question that I believe Councilman Britton just asked. He asked if this whole district was formed, and Councilman, correct me if I heard you wrong, would that impede or increase costs of improving these roadways?
I think it'd increase the cost. It may not impede it, but it'd increase the cost, because it'd make, make it more difficult to take the right of way in the main case, because you could argue that there was a competing, it gets complicated. Make a long story short, it would be more complicated to take the property if you had an historic property, just like it's more complicated to take property if there's a cemetery.
Well, I actually don't think so. I've spoken a lot with FDOT about the cemetery situation lately and found out that they had already done all the things that I had hoped they would have done. And that is, the first thing they do, FDOT goes and looks at the State's Master Site File. So, all of the buildings on here are already on the State's Master Site File. So, widening the road is going to trigger analysis of whether those are significant at the state level anyway. Doesn't matter if we create a historic district or not.
And I know you've done a lot of research, but I'd rather our staff find that out.
Can you go find out the thing I just found out? I will forward you the email, so you can say what I just said.
But I think we said the same thing, really. If a property is designated historic and a, and a road building entity, whether it's state, county, or city, determines to go through that property, I think it's more difficult to go through, historically protect the property. That's what I was saying.
But this is not an additional layer of historic protection that the state would consider relevant. They only consider the State's Master Site File relevant, and that already exists. You get what I'm saying? This doesn't add a layer. The layer's already there.
Does this, does this historic district have a board that people have to go to to get stuff done?
Once again, it depends upon how you create it.
Megan?
The one in Sanford has.
Has a board.
And the resolution has one.
And the resolution.
The resolution is paying the board members.
That's why I asked it.
Yeah, we'd have to get rid of that, because that might make them city employees and that triggers a lot of stuff. But that was inspired from my days as a journalist, where I was told I had to be paid a dollar for a story or else I wouldn't actually turn it in.
So, it has a board?
Yes.
I'll go back to Councilman Pollak's opening statement. There's nothing wrong with historic stuff. We have historic stuff in the city that we all know is historic. When we go by Mrs. Evans' house, that's historic. When we look at other things, those are historic. I know what's historic. I just feel that the concept is fine, but I have a hard time putting handcuffs on people that they don't have now. They have to come and they have to ask a board to do stuff. I have done a ton of research on this with other ones in other states and other things like that. And there are people, I want to paint my shutters a different color, and they're going through all kinds of grief. The thought of having a historic district is fine, but the issues and what benefit you may get from some state grant, for me personally, no one's ever asked me in 14 years of being around here, "We need a historic district." He said maybe one or two people. I don't think the need is there. I think Councilman Pollak brought that up. Are people out there, you know, wanting this? Because one thing you also learn as an elected official, when you lose a vote, you go with the decision of the body. The other thing is, sometimes you go with what the will of the people want. And I'll give you a perfect example. In McKinley's Mill, we had that issue with the diverter up there. Nobody could figure this out. And when I came in here, I said, "Okay, let's just put it to a vote." We sent letters out there and the residents said, "We want this," and we put it in. Right now, I could not support this, because I wouldn't want, as a homeowner, to have to go to a board and say, "I need to make this change," and be told they can't. They have to, the money they could spend on legal, legal fees would maybe negate the grant that they got. I think the idea that Councilwoman brought up is good. Like, if, and I've asked staff, if it's possible, could we declare, "Hey, this is, this is a section of the city that we deem historic."
Mr. Mayor, I might be able to help.
Yes.
First of all, the main answer to all the questions, I think the mayor hit it, is that is, it depends upon what this is. Because you can, you can have a historic preservation ordinance like Sanford's where you, you can't, you can't replace your window unless it's historically precise to the era and the style of architecture and all that good stuff that someone with no class like me doesn't understand. But I know that you can't do much of anything unless you totally conform to the code. At the other end of the extreme is just, I have a building, I want it to be noted to be some historic building, whether it's unique to the city or really, truly historic, under the Department of Interior's classification. And I want to put a city-authorized plaque on it. Okay? It doesn't mean anything, but you got a plaque on your house based upon certain standards of the city. Then in between is the voluntary thing, where a person could place basically deed restrictions on their property. Those don't mean anything unless they get something in exchange. I could put deed restrictions on my property today and take them off tomorrow, unless the city or the city I live in has the ability to make me keep them. And the only way you can make me keep them is give me something for doing that. So, there's this wide range of different types of programs. But like the mayor said, what is, what is this? What is the program? It's not, you know, would this, would there be a board if you wanted one? Would there be mandatory requirements if you wanted them? Could it be voluntary if that's what you wanted?
That's what we have, I think.
Well, we don't even have voluntary.
If I could just add, a historic district is really planned to preserve. So, it's, it's when you, and it's a strong, usually there are strong, it's a strong mechanism to say, the city, the society says, "This has so much value that we want as it is." And there are restrictions. So, it's not really opening for redevelopment, right, that area. But we could have what we, and we don't have, to be frank, we don't-
Tell us more about historic landmark. You're right, you're right.
Yeah.
I mean, because that doesn't sound like that's going to impede mobility projects or anything else. And that seems like it could be a complete opt-in system and then we could do something citywide through codes.
So, although we don't have residents coming to us requiring, you know, historic preservation, we have people wanting to redevelop their property or convert their property into another use. And they find the code, you know, requiring, you know, the same standards for a new development. So, I think if we could have something on the code that recognizes that some properties, and it would be, you know, if the properties would be past the criteria, then we could have, give some flexibility for those people who want to preserve, you know, their property.
Give them a marker or like something, I think, Mr. Groot.
We'll give them some flexibility on the permacity or something.
Flexibility in the code?
Here's, here's an example that may help, okay? Y'all are familiar with the Sanford Civic Center, downtown Sanford, okay? It's old. It's totally unhistoric. It's not historically significant. It's a non-historically significant structure. It's not protected. Does that mean it's not historically important to Sanford? So, let's say I owned it and I said, "I want a plaque on it." So let's say I owned it and I said, "I want a plaque on it." I could apply if it met your criteria and, you know, to put a plaque, a city authorized plaque, showing that I have a significant piece of property, even though legally it's not protected. It's just important. That's what you're talking about.
And then change the codes for the redevelopment of it or the-
Wouldn't change the codes, wouldn't make me not do anything, but it'd allow me to say, "I have an historically significant piece of property and the city said so based upon its standards, and I get to put this plaque up there, like Mount Dora."
We already have that. What we lack is the next part of, "If you decide not to knock down this historically important building, we're going to cut you some slack as you redevelop it or continue to occupy it and make it nicer." So we need to cut them some slack and give them some carrots to keep it up, to make it, to make it at least a fair shot that they'll keep it versus knock it down, build something new.
So the historic landmark option would not allow somebody to get grants from the state, correct? It'd just be that they are-
Well, it depends upon the criteria. You could have criteria that is, a structure could be important to Oviedo or historically significant such that you'd want to make it a local landmark, but it could not be historically significant in any way, shape, or form under federal or state law.
Right.
And not eligible for grants, but it's still important.
You know, the other thing I think about is whatever program you put in, unless it's exactly correct as Councilwoman laid out, all these things that she sent us and what Sanford has, unless it's correct, somebody is going to mistake this, "Okay, well, Oviedo just said we have this historic thing. They're going to try to get grants. They may not get them, and it comes back." And then, you know, you could have staff issues, legal issues, you know.
Road improvement issues.
The, yeah, I mean, that's a great-
Definitely not that. I'll email this Mr. Groot so he can tell you.
I mean, that's a, that's a, that's a great thing, but, I mean, you certainly want to remember your history and you want to do it. But honestly, just looking at this, I just feel like it just, it handcuffs the people out of there that, you know, I can just tell you, my feeling is, and if I'm wrong, then I'd be wrong, but my feeling is if you sent a letter to every one of these homeowners and told them what we're thinking and explained to them what it entailed, I don't think many of them would write back and say, "Let's go for it." But having said that, I know where she's trying to go. She's trying to save what's left. I got it. But the way that you go about it, unfortunately, to do this, is not good. I wouldn't want to be in it. I wouldn't want to have some board telling me, "I can't paint my shutters this color," and that's what's going to happen. I also don't like that when this first was conceived, Mr. Mayor brought this up at a previous meeting, when we first got this, it was, "We're going to make it voluntary, then mandatory." And I'm not going there. I don't make anything mandatory on anybody. Yet people make their own decisions. If they want to keep their house historic, then they'll keep it historic. We just did a development off of Lake Jessup. Some people didn't like it. But guess what? We preserved one of the most historic houses in the city. We just did it, and everybody knows Mrs. Evans' house is historic and we ride by and, "Well, that's cool." We did it a different way. So for me, I can't, I don't want a board like Sanford in that type of situation. If we can figure out some way to deem people's houses, they want to say, "Hey, you know, I've lived in this house my whole life." Megan's house is a perfect example, you know, I mean, it's the oldest house in the city. If she wants to put a plaque on that house, I'd be all for it. I've been in it. That's historic. The Lawton House, okay, because we did all these improvements on the Lawton House because we did that. Now it's not historic. We all know it's historic to put a plaque there. So if it's something we can do to give people that sort of trophy, for lack of a better word, that it's historic and we all know it, that's fine. But I can't have a board here that people can't do stuff. I want to go to Home Depot one day and paint this window or change this, that, and I can't do it. I could ask this board.
Can you have carrots? Are you okay with carrots?
Carrots, one of them.
Okay, that's what it boils down to.
All right. I think we have three that are not there. Historic landmark, sounds like it has a little bit of traction. So perhaps you can put something together with that, with what other municipalities have done that would allow folks to, you know, consider their house historic landmark, to consider if they keep the house as a historic landmark, that we will grant you different codes. That sounds like it may have traction.
That's a step in the right direction. I'm thrilled.
Mr. Mayor, I have one last question.
But Dr. Kurya, nothing that's mandatory, nothing that's going to jack up the price of right-of-way acquisition? No boards? I mean, that's, we're talking plaque and easier codes.
Does Winter Park have a historic district?
I think it does, and I think it's a voluntary one.
Where?
According, I'm not, I didn't have time to research Winter Park, but a meeting with Christine Dalton, she mentioned that we have a voluntary one and it's, according to her opinion, does not work. So we have to, we would have to research to-
She also said that they can opt in and opt out. So when you can come in and out and you don't, you don't have, once you come in, you've got to have buy-in from the get-go and buy-in for the long haul. So the in-and-out thing, just, it doesn't work, I don't think.
Any other, I mean, and obviously Sanford does. Any of the other cities around us, do they decide, I mean, Orlando, I'm sure too, but are there any other ones?
According to her, most of them are mandatory.
Mandatory, okay.
Sanfordville has a grid system area of historic homes.
Yes.
Well, they have a commercial one and a residential side.
Totally different than what we have. We have a smattering of homes.
Right.
All right, well, it sounds like historic landmark, Megan.
So progress. This is huge progress. Yes.
Nothing restrictive. All right, moving on. City manager's report. Mr. Cobb, anything? Hour is getting late.
Yes, Mayor, I just have one thing. Just want to remind everyone that-
That isn't what I meant by the hour is getting late.
I know that, Mayor. Tayside Oviedo is this Saturday at Oviedo Mall, 10:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m.
Great.
That's it, Mayor.
Thank you. Mr. Groot, anything?
Somebody said the hour is getting long. I don't know who it was, but nothing yet.
Councilmember, Sladek.
I'm excited that we are going to have some carrots. That's all. Thank you.
I heard historic landmark and plaques, near carrots.
No boards, no mandatory plaques and everything.
Nothing, but some leniency for people who choose to keep the building there as they redevelop. That is huge. So huge.
It doesn't put any restrictions on the improvements we have to make.
Yeah. Good. This is great.
Councilmember Britton, you're up.
A couple items real quick. First of all, Councilwoman Sladek and I attended the meet and greet with Congresswoman Murphy. And Brian, I think I forwarded you her contact information.
Yes, sir.
Have we contacted them yet?
I have not had a chance to contact them yet, but I will do it this week.
Let's not get that, they were very excited to meet with us. And I suggested we meet as a group, maybe as a work session or some sort of group event that we could get with her. And she gave a very good talk at the mall. Second item, Oviedo Little League grand opening was last Saturday. I'd say they had good 300 kids out there ready to smack it around. It was a good time. And last but not least, I'll just give a shout out to former Councilman Schenk. His kids are in the Florida Youth Symphony Orchestra and some of us attended a symphony slash opera event last Saturday, and it was really outstanding. It's incredible, the talent they have in that group. So that's it for me.
Thank you. Just real brief, because it is late. State of the City is this Wednesday over at Oviedo on the Park. Starts at 5:30 with food trucks. 6 o'clock, actually, the Councilman Schenk's children will be there entertaining everybody with strings. And 6:30, we start the presentation. So lots of information to come out this year, and the format of the PowerPoint's a little bit different. I think everybody's going to enjoy it. Bob, you're up.
All right, I've only got like six items.
Yeah, no, you don't.
The police awards banquet was really tremendous. And, I mean, I always know you all do a great job, but listening to those stories was, I mean, it was amazing. It was great. The Mardi Gras was a great event as well. It didn't seem as well-attended as some of the other ones, but I had a blast at that one. And then the Bark and Brew was great this past weekend.
Oh, yeah, I forgot about that. Great job, Drew. I mean, I think you had more dogs than humans. It seemed that way.
They were there for the beer.
I saw a dog drinking beer there. It was wild.
The, I did my first solo welcome to Oviedo to the swim meet and ended up all wet because I got splashed by somebody, but it worked out well. It was, they had the Area Two Swim Meet Championship over at the Aquatic Center. The place was packed, and then Bark and Brew was going on and basketball. And your team did a great job keeping everybody organized. And then my last item, I've been thinking about this, as I was driving, driving down Lockwood, the old dump that we keep talking about, do we, is that even operational? Are we doing a lot with that anymore, right at Evans Street in Lockwood? Because my thought is, is-
That's a storage yard. That's not even a dump. The dump's behind it.
Okay, well, my thought is, is, you know, I mean, it could be a place for a cemetery.
No. Don't touch it. Don't go over there.
No, no, seriously.
We're talking about the northwest corner of Lockwood and-
Yes, and Evans.
Evans.
Monitoring. It was a domestic landfill once upon a long time ago.
Right.
And it's, I don't believe we're monitoring it anymore if it has been released, but it-
Is it, is it, is it domestic? Was, wasn't it, okay, because the way it was brought to my neighborhood is it was, it was more of the-
Construction.
Well, the trees and the yard debris and stuff.
Maybe some of that, but the construction landfill is the one that's, the recon is still operating, concrete up behind the connector piece between Shane Kelly Park and, sorry, Drew, I forgot the name of your, Oviedo Sports Complex.
All right. Now, Councilman, the property you're asking about is the old city landfill before they built the mega landfill, the Osceola landfill outside Sanford. And so, yeah, there's no telling what's underneath all of that and-
Hey, Bob, I gotta, you know, you know that church we all attend?
Mm-hmm.
We approved a cemetery for over there, so just go talk to the bishop.
Okay.
Don't, don't, don't you attend that church. You're covered. Don't worry.
All right. That's all I have.
You don't want to go down the cemetery. No, no, you're done.
One last question. On my calendar, there was a government night at the COPS Center tomorrow? Yeah?
Miss Cancel.
All right.
Okay, real quick, yeah, Britton did Little League and I did Babe Ruth and Drew. Those fields at Babe Ruth, everybody was telling me it's all good. There was no complaints. You know, a few years back, people always got little things, but everybody's having a great time out there. Tony and his group did a great job, so that was, that was fun. The, our battalion chief, Neil Huggins, we've all seen on Facebook and everything. And I just want to say, you know, all these things that we talk about are so insignificant. This is like, you know, this is one of the best guys you'll ever meet, the most classiest guy, and really just went through two really tough surgeries. And, you know, he's on Facebook and smiling. You know, most people would crawl under the table, but, you know, he beat it. And good things happen to good people. That, to me, is the feel-good story of the year with him, so everything is working out good. So we send Neil our best. He's just such a good man. Really didn't deserve that. You know, there's worse people that should have got what he got, but he fought it valiantly and he's doing well. So keep your prayers up for Neil. And then, Chief, honestly, this year's COPS thing, the emotion in that room, even you had a hard time holding it. We have some amazing police officers in this city and some of the stories we heard this year, and my wife tells me all the time, out of all the events that we do in the city, that is her favorite one for the stories. But some of the stories we heard with pulse and kidney donations and just, you know, we are well taken care of in the city. So, Chief, you tell your guys and girls that we're always there and we got them always. But that was a really good event. Always, always loved that one. So that's all I have, Mayor. Everything's good.
And we got the human termite.
Now, you know, I forgot to announce this earlier when we had a crowd in here. Anybody at home who has lost keys here at the last council meeting, we have this keychain here. They've been trying to identify, so if you lost them and they're yours, they're here in the city clerk's office. Future meeting dates, March 20, we have no meeting, that is spring break week. March 27 at 6:00 p.m., we have our budget work session, correct, Brian?
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir.
All righty, and then on-
Mr. Mayor, I may be on travel the 27th, but do not change the meeting. I can get caught up. It's the first budget meeting.
Yeah, that's the easy one.
I can get caught up with Brian and Jerry.
If anything changes, let us know. Then in April, we have April 3, April 17, both at 6:30 p.m., regular sessions. Anything else for the good of the order? Mr. Cobb, Mr. Groot?
No, sir.
Barbara, anything for us? We're adjourned.